As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Tonight, I'd like to begin what I hope might become a regular tradition, asking one or more individuals from our community to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We've done this regularly at our September meeting with the boys and girls who represent Greenwich so well at the American Allegiant Boys and Girls State Convention each summer. But I'd like to ask you all in advance of our meetings in the future to consider if there is some member of the community that we might give recognition to by asking them to come if they could spare some time for us and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll start us off this month by asking someone who you can understand that I'm very proud of to lead us in the pledge tonight. This young woman at the front, Christina Byrne, happens to be my daughter.[61.62][61.62](APPLAUSE). My wife and I don't get to see her much any longer since she was snatched from our arms by the Naval Academy two years ago. But she's here for two weeks, and so I asked her if she would come and do the honors tonight, and she agreed to do so. Christina Byrne, Midshipman Second Class at United States Naval Academy.[86.61][86.61](APPLAUSE).
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'll see you at home later.[111.11][111.11](APPLAUSE). As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our May budget meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those draft minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as proposed stand adopted upon unanimous Jenny Crowe, Chair of District Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members, guests. I learned at our district meeting this week that this is Blair Murphy's last meeting of the RTM. On behalf of our district, I wanted to offer a few words of thanks and acknowledgement. The signature achievement that many of us know Blair for is treetops. This is over 100 acres straddling the Mayanus River with Stanford, most of it in Greenwich. At the time of Blair's involvement, it was the largest privately-owned undeveloped land in Lower Fiofero County. Blair was quoted in a 1998 New York Times article vowing to fight development on this property. As a leader in this endeavor, he worked with then-mayor of Stanford Dan Malloy, Bill Nickerson, Tom Ragland, Lolly Prince, Chris Shays, Dolly Powers, Louise Griswold, and David Ogilvy, then-the Vice Chair of the Greenwich Land Trust. This battle was still in progress when Blair joined the RTM in March 2000 when Mike Mason was the Chair of District Eight. In January 2001, when a vote for the 1.5 million conservation easement on treetops came before the Greenwich RTM, it was presented on a combined agenda, and there was not a single nay vote. This was a job well-done for the town. Blair has continued to work on land use issues with a special interest in water issues. His committee members report that he has near-perfect attendance. He's always on time. He always poses thoughtful questions. He's often the first to arrive at committee. He's a consistent voice of reason and patience. He's cooperative and collegial at all meetings. And he has a great sweater collection.[264.33][264.33](LAUGHTER). Blair, we thank you for your work on the RTM as a friend and colleague on District Eight. We'll miss you. We and the rest of the RTM wish you well on your upcoming move to Stanford and your future endeavors. I ask you all to join me in a round of applause for Blair.[283.83][283.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. As I informed our district and committee chairs based upon the suggestions received, I will recommend that we organize our call as follows. I will suggest a motion to combine the following items for voting purposes: Items 1, 2, and 3, 10, 11, 13, and 14. And if we do combine those, that would leave to consider separately Items 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 12. So at this point, is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine Items 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, 13, and 14 for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and combine Items 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, 13, and 14 for voting purposes. That motion is not debatable and requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of combining Items 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, 13, and 14 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. So Item 1, which was postponed from our April meeting, is now before us. May we have -- this is a resolution to appoint Francis Scarpa to be a regular member of the Nathaniel Withersall Board for a term expiring March 31, 2015. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, beginning with Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee?
Good evening. Our committee met with Dr. Scarpa last week to discuss his renomination to the Board of Nathaniel Withersall. Dr. Scarpa is a retired surgeon who previously practiced at Greenwich Hospital. He's also been a clinical instructor at Yale School of Medicine and an adjunct Assistant Professor of Surgery at New York Medical College. Dr. Scarpa is presently the only medical professional on the Board of Nathaniel Withersall. His extensive medical background is exceptionally helpful to the Board as they address some of the medical aspects of the Withersall. For example, Dr. Scarpa attends the quarterly nursing staff meetings, and he is then able to bring back and interpret the relevant information for the remaining Board members. During our interview with Dr. Scarpa, he indicated that although he lives in Florida for part of the year, he is able to fully fulfill his Board duties by participating in meetings via conference calls. Our vote was 12-0-0 to recommend Dr. Scarpa to renomination of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Von Keiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Madam Retor. Ladies and gentlemen, we met Dr. Scarpa finally on April the 17th. We voted 11-0-0 with District 11 absent. I see that the school system hasn't turned on the air conditioning to make this a fast meeting, so I'll make it brief.
Discussion on Item 1. Item 2 now comes before us once again. This was postponed from our April meeting. It is a resolution to appoint James Carr to be a regular member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses One Word Agency for a term expiring March 31, 2016.[503.81][503.81](LAUGHTER). Mr. Von Keiseling.
Well, we have a one-word man. Carr was -- is a new appointment from alternate to regular on the Inland Wetlands Agency. We met with him April 17th. We voted 9-2-0 with District 11 absent. The negative votes were disturbed by the stringency of the agency.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Agency Committee interviewed James Carr back on March 6. He is, as Mr. Von Keiseling mentioned, he was currently an alternate on the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency and is being considered to move up as a regular member. With us, he emphasized the preponderance of water courses in town and the need for the town to have a strategy of water management, both for water quality and flooding. He would like to see a strengthening and clarity of the inland wetlands' role. Our vote on Mr. Carr was 11 in favor, 0 opposed, 1 abstention.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 2. Item 3 now comes before us, again postponed from our April meeting. This is a resolution to appoint William Galvin, a regular member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency for a term expiring March 31, 2016. Mr. Berg.
So the Land Use Committee interviewed William Galvin back on April the 2nd. He is being reappointed as a regular member, also of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency. So he explained his reasons for wishing to continue to serve. He said that land use matters are getting more attention in town as the amount of easily developable land is exhausted. Many of the remaining undeveloped parcels require variances of one type or another to be developed. Therefore, there is substantial pressure from property owners and town regulatory bodies like Inland Wetlands to grant more variances. He finds it intellectually challenging as more applicants bring experts to make their case. He agreed it would be helpful if the Board, that is, if the Agency had access to more expert consultants. But due to budget constraints, access is limited to the most difficult cases. And our vote on Mr. Galvin was 12 in favor, 0 opposed. 12-0-0.
Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The late Mr. Galvin was met with us on April the 17th with District 11 absent. We voted 11-0-0.
Late.
Well, he was late getting to us.
Late.
Yeah, tardy, the tardy, Mr. -- we approved him 11-0-0. He's a fine member, et cetera. One of the members expressed concern because the nominee's remarks about not enough due process concerned him. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 3. Item 10 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Mr. Von Keiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
I have the resolution, Your Honor, and it has disappeared.
This is Mr. Morgenot.
Yes.
The younger, Mr. Morgenot, the younger. Resolves that the fol-- oh, excuse me, sorry. There we are. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed a member of the Claims Committee for the term expiring 12-31-2013, Richard J. Morgenot, Esquire.
That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second and is currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, beginning with Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Morgenot appeared before our committee last Monday evening. He has maintained a law practice in town for the past 26 years. He has a property and business-oriented litigation experience and does a fair amount of probate court work. He is, in response to some delegates' questions, he stated that he settles about 50% of his cases. He emphasized he does not have any lawsuits pending against the town, does not sue the town. However, he is familiar with those attorneys who might bring lawsuits against the town of Greenwich, and he believes that he can provide insight to the Claims Committee because he's personally familiar with many of the attorneys who are plaintiff's counsel. He explained that other people view the town as a source of deep pockets for litigation. He wants to do what he can to keep that from happening too often. Our vote on his appointment was 11-0-0. District 1 was absent.
Mr. Wells?
Yeah.
And Mr. Ennis, report of our Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee met last Monday, 7:30, in the lounge. We interviewed Mr. Morgenot and found all of the qualities that were recited by Mr. Wells to be present and accurate. The vote was 11-0-0. District 1 was absent.
Thank you. And Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Probably should have gone first, I suppose, in this case. Mr. Morgenot, for the Claims Committee, there were three candidates that we've managed to surface for the remaining position on claims. As you recall, we voted in block last time, and there was one seat open. Mr. Morgenot, strong trial and local practice were deemed best suited to compete -- to complete the Claims Committee roster. We met March 27th and voted 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 10. All right, before continuing with our combined calendar items, I would like to point out there is a speaker sign-up list for the leaf blower ordinance. There will be a sheet at the table as you enter the auditorium, and I'll put one at the front of the auditorium. If you've already given me your name, you don't need to sign up again. So if you could please, any interested speaker could put their name on that list. Thank you. All right. So that takes care of Item 10. Item 11 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that? David Tice, our Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Be it resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate, member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency for a term expiring 3-31-13, Scott Salisbury.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 11 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on this? Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
So Mr. Salisbury was interviewed by the Land Use Committee on May 31st. All of the districts were present. Mr. Salisbury, as Mr. Tice explained, is being nominated as an alternate to the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency, so he's new. He discussed his interest in conservation, both as the Greenwich Chairman of Ducks Unlimited, which is a group that works to protect and restore duck wetland habitats, and he is also an active volunteer for the Greenwich Land Trust. The committee encouraged Mr. Salisbury to attend state-sponsored training classes on wetlands regulation and management. Our vote on Mr. Salisbury was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. First of all, I'd like to explain that this green jacket, people think I'm from the Masters. Obviously, they don't know leprechaun when they see it. The Mr. Salisbury we saw on June the 4th, and we voted 12-0-0 in favor for all the fine recommendations that you heard already.
How many thought this was a Masters champion?[1056.44][1056.44](LAUGHTER). All right. Discussion on Item 11. Item 13 now comes before us. Drew Marzullo, our Selectman, who brings that resolution before us.
Did you say 12 or 13?
13.
13. Resolved, Mr. Moderator, guests, members, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a regular member of the Board of Health for a term expiring 3-31-2016, Michael J. Franco.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 13 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Dr. Franco is presently a member of the Board of Health and serves as the Secretary of that Board. He's currently the Medical Director of the Critical Care Unit at Greenwich Hospital, as well as an Assistant Clinical Professor at Yale School of Medicine. He believes that his extensive professional background in critical care is especially valuable to the Board when they discuss issues such as disaster preparedness and preparing for potential public health emergencies, such as a measles outbreak or a problem at the Indian Point Power Plant. Our vote was 12-0-0 in support of Dr. Franco. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Nicholas, Mr. Von Keiseling?
Yes. Wasn't that -- weren't the Nicholas Brothers a dance team? On Dr. Franco, we met on June the 4th, voted 12-0-0. I can personally attest to his qualities. I've followed the Board of Nathaniel Withersall. He is an integral and a very important part of it, and I'm glad that we're able to support his candidacy.
This was the Board of Health, Item 14, right?
Yes.
Okay.
13.
Item 13.
Yes, Dr. Franco.
Yes. Discussion on Item 13.
Oh, Board of Health.
Mr. Mason? You had something you wanted to say?
I just think we should say happy birthday to Mr. Von Keiseling.
(SINGING) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Franco. Happy birthday to you.[1187.23][1187.23](APPLAUSE).
Your indulgence, Mr. Moderator. Unfortunately, it's not my birthday.[1194.33][1194.33](LAUGHTER). I put that on Facebook so I could have security and gave them the wrong number because you never know who wants to take that. But I'll appreciate any gifts you have.[1204.03][1204.03](LAUGHTER).
Well, I don't know. I was told you've now reached the mandatory retirement age.[1212.03][1212.03](LAUGHTER).
God help us, that would cut out all of our camp.
All right. I think we were on Dr. Franco. Discussion on Item 13. Item 14 now comes before us. Do we have a resolution? Drew Marzullo, our Selectman?
Mr. Moderator, resolve pursuant to State Public Act Number 95268, an act concerning neighborhood assistance. The programs and complete applications filed in the town clerk's office are hereby approved for the purpose of encouraging business contributions to nonprofit organizations and government agencies providing important services in Greenwich.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 14 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris, once again with our Health and Human Services Committee report.
Good evening. Dustin Anderson from the Office of the First Selectmen attended our meeting and explained the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Grant Program. This is an item that comes before the RTM each year. The Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act provides tax credits for businesses that contribute to community programs that have received both municipal and state approval. Municipalities interested in submitting programs for inclusion in the Neighborhood Assistance Act must hold public hearings, and then the legislative body of each municipality must vote to approve the programs. After the tax-exempt organization receives both municipal and state approval for its proposed programs, it's then up to that organization to secure funding from businesses, which will receive a tax credit from the state. This year, four not-for-profits in Greenwich Family Centers, Greenwich Adult Daycare, Kids in Crisis, and the YMCA have submitted requests for contributions totaling approximately $693,000. Again, it's up to the organization requesting the funds for the approved programs to solicit and secure those donations from for-profit institutions. As a point of information, last year approximately $629,000 was requested, though the amount donated was only $30,000. While there's clearly a great need for these programs, it's a struggle to find corporate donors, and that struggle is enhanced during difficult economic times. Our vote was 12-0-0 in favor of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Finance Committee voted 11-0-0. By unanimous consent, District 2 was absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 14. That brings us to the conclusion of the items combined on our combined calendar. So I ask the district chairs to please mark your voting cards, combined calendar items 1 through 3, 10, 11, 13, and 14, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will continue with the business of the meeting. That now brings us to the first of the remaining items to be considered separately. Item number 4 comes before us. Al Kava, Director of Labor Relations.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, good evening. Item number 4. Resolve that the representative town meeting, in exercising its authority pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7 hyphen 474B, hereby approves the funds necessary to implement the terms of the town Local 456 IBT collective bargaining agreement covering the periods fiscal 1112 and fiscal 1213. Said funds have previously been appropriated in the adopted fiscal 1112 and fiscal 1213 budgets. In addition, there, too, the representative town meeting approves the funds necessary to implement the terms of the town Local 456 IBT collective bargaining agreement covering the period fiscal 1314, subject to the budgetary process as prescribed in the town charter. Be it further resolved that representative town meeting approves any terms of such agreement which may be in conflict with the town charter, special act, ordinance, rule, or regulation adopted by the municipal employer or its agents. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 4 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, beginning with David Detchin, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee?
Mr. Moderator, members of the Greenwich RTM, the explantos which you have received go a long way toward providing the background for this particular collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 456. In those explantos, you will find not only a listing of the various changes from the prior contract, and the contract appears on the town website, but also a summary of the actual and estimated costs resulting from the negotiated terms of the proposed collective bargaining agreement, as well as a more detailed cost breakdown. The LCC believes that this is sufficient information for each RTM member to make an informed and intelligent decision whether to approve or reject this particular contract. This union represents about 400 full-time and 100 part-time employees of the town at various locations and in various departments, especially Parks and Rec and Nathaniel Withersall. Regarding the GWI, I will note that the increases of 2.5% in the 2012-2013 fiscal year and 2% for the 1314 fiscal year are within the range of typical settlements being achieved in other Connecticut governments so far, including those here in Fairfield County. Thus, the range of most settlements for the two following fiscal years have generally been in the range of 2.0 to 2.75%, with some outlier settlements below 2%, and at the other end, some as high as 2.95%, 3%, or even 3.25%. Let me spend the rest of my time here pointing out some of the trends and innovations in this particular collective bargaining agreement. First, the town has continued its efforts to standardize health care insurance offerings and to reduce the town's health care costs. This is an ongoing effort that's being made, and the effort of the town is to essentially have the same cost-saving structures, health-saving structures, adopted by each of the collective bargaining units in the town. Thus, this health care saving structure the town has already achieved with Lyona and GMEA, including a $4,000 deductible, which has also been accomplished with this collective bargaining agreement. However, that particular high deductible with this particular union will only enter into effect on 1 January 2014. Please keep in mind that although we have a fiscal year of July 1 to June 30, in fact, our various insurance programs are on a calendar year. Moreover, the premium copays by employees for the alternative POS coverage are being increased by 2% on 1 January 2013 and another 1% on 1 January 2014. I think I should note that whereas Greenwich is sort of in the middle of the pack on GWI, in fact, Greenwich is one of the pioneers and is fairly cutting-edge in trying to achieve these restructuring of health costs for the town. The second innovation which the town achieved was an agreement with the Teamsters Union to split the GWI into six-month increments in both 1213 and 1314, so that part of the increase for that particular fiscal year in the gross wage is, in fact, delayed six months and only kicks in halfway through the year on January 1 of the next calendar year. This savings in cash outlay, in fact, is helping us recoup some of the delay in savings that we're experiencing because the high deductible program only goes into effect on 1 January 14. Another innovation is the expansion of the town's right to subcontract tree programs. Thus, the Trees at Risk program to eliminate about 1,000 trees that are endangering our power lines. We now have an agreement with this union to allow us to contract out that work. In addition, the right of the town to subcontract out another tree crew, which has This savings in cash outlay, in fact, is helping us recoup some of the delay in savings that we're experiencing because the high deductible program only goes into effect on 1 January 14. Another innovation is the expansion of the town's right to subcontract tree programs. Thus, the Trees at Risk Program to eliminate about 1,000 trees that are endangering our power lines. We now have an agreement with this union to allow us to contract out that work. In addition, the right of the town to subcontract out another tree crew, which had previously been agreed to on a limited basis, has now been re-estated and has no fixed expiration date within this particular collective bargaining agreement. The town believes that this subcontracting can result in significant savings and avoids the need to hire additional employees and reduces the need to pay overtime. Indeed, this ability to subcontract is partly the reason why the Parks and Rec Department has been able to reduce its headcount significantly over the last few years. A fourth innovation is the right of the town to increase the pool of candidates for promotion out of the union workforce when a vacancy occurs. In the past, if a vacancy came open, the senior-most employee was automatically promoted, regardless of whether the senior-most employee was really the right guy, so to speak. Now, the union may select for promotion from a pool of the three senior-most candidates, which increases the opportunity for the town to come up with a qualified person to fill the particular vacancy. Finally, the collective bargaining agreement increases the number of shifts. That part-time employees may work at Nathaniel Witherall by 1, and this should reduce the amount of overtime that needs to be paid. The Labor Contracts Committee met on 17 May, the day after the ratification of this collective bargaining agreement by the union. Note that this particular collective bargaining agreement was reviewed by the old Labor Contracts Committee from 2010-2011, since the new Labor Contracts Committee has not yet been appointed by the representative town meeting. In any event, the LCC voted 5-0-0 to recommend unanimously that the RTM approve this collective bargaining agreement. One of the two alternates of the committee was also in attendance and participated fully in the discussion, and he stated that he also would vote for approval of the agreement.
Thank you. John Harkins, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and fellow members of the RTM. Your Town Services Committee met on June 5th to review plans for next year's budget cycle and to take up item number 4, the approval of the Teamsters Contract. All districts were represented. Our review of the budget process from last year was one of the major concerns that evening. And Mr. Kava met with us to review the salient points which have been previously discussed that included the health care savings, the promotional practices and policies. Since there were no further questions, we voted to receive the report 11-0-1. The one abstention, District 4, is because the member was a member also of our RTM and the labor contract group that was being represented. Then Mr. Benoit met with, discussed the fire alarms that were also a piece that we took up from last time. That being said, we voted 11-0-1. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis with our Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee voted 9-2-1. Districts 8 and 12 voted no. They were unhappy with the total cost of the contract, and additionally, at some point they just must say, we must just say no to some of the increases that we're seeing. District 7 abstained. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 4. Mr. Tuthill?
Moderator, I move in discussion for the balance of the meeting, we limited the three minutes per speaker, with the exception of the principal proponent for any item, to get 10 minutes, and for the principal opponent, to be determined by you, to get 10 minutes also.
Sarah Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to limit debate for the balance of the meeting, such that all speakers would be limited to three minutes per motion per item, with the exception that the principal proponent of a motion would be entitled to speak for 10 minutes, and the principal opponent, as determined by the moderator, would also be entitled to speak for 10 minutes. A motion to limit debate is not itself debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of Mr. Tuthill's motion to limit debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
That motion has carried. So for the balance of the meeting, all speakers are on notice that there is this three-minute limit in effect. Discussion on item 4. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 4, proceed to poll your delegation. I have the results of the vote on the combined calendar items. Those were items 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, 13, and 14. Those in favor, 184. Opposed, 1. Abstaining, 2. The combined calendar items have carried. All right, that now brings us to item 5. That is proposed by our Land Use Committee, Peter Berg, its chair.
Evening again. Resolved that it is the sense of this meeting that the Board of Selectmen should direct the town of Greenwich, which has been named as a defendant in the lawsuit brought by Richard Kozinski, Susan C. Kozinski, Lee W. Higgins, Carrie O. Higgins, Peter B. Janis, and Elizabeth D. Janis, against Aquarian Water Company of Connecticut, and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, also known as AT&amp;T, to join such lawsuit as a plaintiff to oppose the construction of a cell tower at 455 Valley Road and to uphold the terms of the deed dated September 22, 1953, whereby the town sold the property to the Greenwich Water Company with a restriction that it be used for waterworks purposes.
Thank you. That resolution being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second and is currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? We'll begin with the Land Use Committee. And Peter Berg, its chair.
So the, this wasn't actually referred to the Land Use Committee, but we did choose to take it up, and our vote to take it up was 12-0-0. We were assisted on this item by Kip Bergweger of the Legislative Enrols Committee in District 8, Jenny Crowe, the chairman of District 8, and Bob May, the chairman of District 12. The resolution is identical to resolutions that have been adopted by both District 8 and District 12. District 8 adopted this resolution 21-0-2 on March 7, and District 12 adopted it on March 8 by a vote of 18 to 0. The Land Use Committee is bringing the Sense of the Meeting resolution to the full RTM tonight because the moderator advised us that a district resolution is not a resolution of the RTM. Only the full RTM can speak for the RTM. So back in last month in May, the Land Use Committee voted to place this item on tonight's call. We invited the town land use council, John Wetmore, to attend, and also First Selectman, Peter Tessie. The First Selectman declined to attend because it's his policy not to comment on legal matters before that the town is involved in. Mr. Wetmore responded with an email saying that the town has not taken a position on the record in this case yet. As to status and appearance, has been filed by this office on behalf of the town. Additionally, scheduling orders have been entered outlining various dates by which motions must be filed. So this item is not about cell towers. Our discussion revolved around the need for the town to defend its land rights and whether the RTM should have a say if the town is not going to defend its land rights. We don't know why the town is not defending its land rights. We just know that it's not. When the town sold this land to the Water Company in 1953, it placed a restriction. It said the land could be used only for water purposes. The sale was approved by the RTM. All land disposition, including proper deed restrictions, was and is the RTM's responsibility by charter. Now, the Water Company wants to give a lease on the property to, in this case, a cellphone company and to pocket the revenue. The question is whether the RTM should have a say in whether or not the town defends its deed restriction. The resolution instructs the Selectmen's office to defend the town's land rights. The specific commercial use being a cell tower was not the important issue. The concern was that failure to defend this change of use could result in subsequent additional changes in the future. So our vote on this, on the merits of this item, was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Alexis Vulgaris with the Health and Human Services Committee report.
Good evening. The Health and Human Services Committee met last Tuesday to take up this resolution. Michael Carter and Peter Berg from the Land Use Committee met with us to present this resolution. Selectman Drew Marzullo, who was scheduled to speak to our committee about another item, was also present, however, he explained that because the town was listed as a defendant in this pending suit, his ability to publicly comment on the issue would be limited. Mr. Carter and Mr. Berg encouraged our committee to view this issue as a land use issue rather than as a health-related issue. They argued that the original terms of the deed are no longer being upheld. They pointed out that it's not the installation of a cell tower that we should find objectionable, but rather that the land is being used for something other than the intended use as agreed upon in the deed transaction, that of water supply purposes. Our committee, as you know, customarily deals with health-related issues, not legal or land use issues, and we found it surprising that we were being asked to consider this resolution, given that all of the information we were presented with, both by our guest speakers and the supporting documents contained in the explanatory notes package, dealt with land use issues, such as examining restrictive covenants included in a deed and reviewing documents related to a similar lawsuit involved in the King Merritt Acres area. Our committee did review a final report issued by the town Cellular Communications Infrastructure Task Force Committee, which was published in 2010, to see if any of their findings or recommendations applied to this resolution, but it did not appear that their suggestions overlapped with the proposed land use resolution. Ultimately, our committee voted 9-0-3 in support of this resolution, as the majority of the committee members felt that the installation of a cellphone tower violated the intended use terms outlined in the deed. Districts 1, 2, and 3 abstained from voting. Those committee members felt that the Health and Human Services Committee was not the right committee to take up this issue, and that as a committee, we needed additional legal advice before voting to join a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the Legislative Enrols Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, our committee took up this item last Monday evening. District 1 was absent. We had Wayne Fox, the town attorney, with us. Mr. Fox explained first that John Wetmore is handling this litigation on behalf of the town, and secondly, that this matter has been discussed in executive session with the Board of Selectmen, and it would be inappropriate for him to go into the details of the confidential matters discussed in executive session. Mr. Fox did explain to us that the town has decided not to become involved in the litigation as a plaintiff, but he also acknowledged that the RTM is within its rights to ask the town to do so. We also were joined by two residents who were involved in the litigation as plaintiffs, and a third resident who had purchased his home and relied on the town's deed. They stated that the Siting Council has already been, has already approved the installation of this cell tower, and they had requested an injunction, but that request is currently pending. Mr. Bergweger argued that this matter, he's from District 8 and representative from the district that brought this matter eventually to the Land Use Committee, he argued that this was a matter involving the authority of the RTM. He pointed out the documents that are part of the explanos that give you a legislative history of this, and he wanted to point out to our committee, and therefore to you, that the RTM did authorize the Selectmen to sell the land, but subject to certain conditions, including, quote, "providing for reverter to the town in the event that the premises cease to be used for waterworks purposes." In other words, the RTM required that the deed include a restrictive covenant. Mr. Bergweger argued further that a reverter is a property right, and only the RTM has the authority to transfer town property. Failure to defend the reverter would constitute an abandonment or transfer of town property. Several of our members were confused by the language of the resolution, which requested that the town join the lawsuit as a plaintiff, since they'd already been joined in this litigation as a defendant. We also heard from Mr. Fox that if we did become involved in this litigation in opposition to what AT&amp;T was trying to do, that there may be some expert witness fees involved here, which would be an additional cost to the town. He did not quantify how much that would be. So we did make one change, and at the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, I would move to amend the resolution. There were certain words that were drafted to, the language that was taken out was to delete the words "to join such lawsuit as a plaintiff" in the fifth and sixth lines of the resolution. Our vote on legal order of the resolution, since this is a Sense of the Meeting resolution, we all felt that it was in legal order, 11-0-0. Our vote on the merits of the resolution as amended was 10-1-0. District 2, that was me, voted no, because I don't believe it's a good idea for the RTM to be directing the town to take legal positions in pending litigation.
Thank you. There being no further committee reports, Mr. Wells, now would be the time to propose your amendment.
Okay. On behalf of the Legislative Enrols Committee, on line 5 and also going into line 6, right after the words "AKA AT&amp;T, comma, delete the following words, 'to join such lawsuit as a plaintiff.'"
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of our Legislative Enrols Committee, it does not require a second. We can adopt motions to amend upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to that proposed deletion? Hearing none. The Legislative Enrols Committee motion to amend item 5 is adopted upon unanimous consent. Discussion on item 5. Kip Bergweger, District 8. And I remind all speakers that there is a three-minute limit in effect. Well, it's not Mr. Bergweger.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM and guests, the committee reports have been very comprehensive, and I think there are just a few more details will help to understand the nature of this. First of all, we should note that the town has been sued. The town is a party to the lawsuit. It's not a question of should we join the suit. We are in the suit. So the question is how are we going to respond, what will be the town's position in this lawsuit? The legislative history of this matter, back in 1952, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the sale of this land to the Greenwich Water Company, subject to a requirement that it be used exclusively for waterworks. The matter came to the RTM the next month, in January of 1953, and at that time, the resolution that was proposed gave to the Board of Selectmen the discretion to set conditions. The RTM tabled that resolution, and it was then modified and brought back in April of 1953, at which point several additional conditions were specified that must go into the deed, including a requirement that the property be used for waterworks, and that if it would fail to, if it ceased to be used for that purpose, then the land would revert back to the town, which in effect created a valuable property right in the town. If Aquarian Water Company someday decides to build a 7-Eleven there instead of a water treatment plant, the town gets back a property on the Myanis River, which will have substantial value. So it's important to preserve the town's rights in the reverter. Now, the language that's in the deed does not say that it has to be used exclusively for waterworks purposes, but the Connecticut Supreme Court decided in 2006 in the case which is in your explanos, Morgan Bresser, that was a case with very similar facts, property in Greenwich, subject to a restriction that it be used for water supply purposes. Aquarian leased a part of the property to Verizon to build a telecommunications facility.
Mr. Bergweger, could I just interrupt you? I'm sorry. I had assumed, since this was proposed- I had assumed, since this was proposed by the Land Use Committee, that the principal proponent would be the chair of the Land Use Committee. Am I incorrect in that, or was there some? Mr. Berg, is that your understanding, that you would be the principal proponent?
Are you saying that he's gone over three minutes?
No, but he's coming, it's two and a half minutes, and I see that he has, I assume he has.
Mr. Bergweger was the author of the resolution, so I would be happy to cede that role to him.
Okay. Mr. Bergweger, then you have up to 10 minutes. You've used two and a half minutes.
Well, I've been editing my remarks, so I hope to get it within three as it is. In the case considered by the Supreme Court, as I said, Verizon was going to lease the property to build a telecommunications facility. The neighbors sued, challenging the failure of, the violation of the restrictive covenant, and the Connecticut Supreme Court construed language which is very similar to the language in the deed on the Mayanis property, to mean that it has to be used exclusively for water purposes, and if it's used for telecommunications purposes, the deed is violated. Our concern is that, with that understanding of the, or at least, let me back up, there may be multiple interpretations of the language, and it's ultimately for the court to decide whether the language in our, in the Mayanis deed is, has the same meaning as the language in the deed that the Supreme Court had considered. But it's very, very similar, and it's difficult for me to think that the court would reach a different conclusion. And that is why, if we don't defend it, we may be giving up a right, because if the restriction in the Mayanis deed is interpreted as meaning that the property must be used exclusively for waterworks purposes, and the town does not, does not take that position in the litigation, we can be accused later of having either waived or abandoned our right, that property right. So, our concern is we don't want to give up something. We're already in the lawsuit. We should be defending the deed and interpreting it to support and retain the rights to the reverter. So, now, some people have suggested that it's the executive department, or the executive in the town, which has the ultimate decision as to whether to, how to conduct this litigation. And we would agree that tactics would be within the executive's power, but the executive branch is obligated to abide by the rules and regulations and ordinances of the town, and those require RTM approval for a transfer of a property right. So, this is not trying to interfere with the litigation, but we are trying to get the town to support the RTM's authority, ultimately to decide whether or not to transfer a valuable property right. So, we would urge you to adopt this sense of the meeting resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg, District 8, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Thank you. I'll just add that when I attended the Health and Human Services Committee, Mr. Marzullo was there. Mr. Marzullo said that he had been voting in favor of defending this against, so it was a 2-1 vote at the Board of Selectmen, and that he expressed the opinion, it would, that it would take an overwhelming vote of this body tonight to persuade his colleagues to switch their vote. So, with that in mind, I would urge you all to vote in favor, and certainly not to abstain. So, please vote for this item. Thank you.
Further discussion on item 5. Nick Edwards, District 8.
Thank you for this opportunity. In District 8, we had an extensive conversation about this, about the rights and the authority of the RTM. It's quite clear that the selectman proposed something to be considered and approved or disapproved by the body, so it would seem going back, back into the 50s and going forward, that this is not just an executive privilege to decide whether they're going to defend it or not, but has to do fundamental rights of how the RTM works and how the town works. So, I disagree with the attorney for the town saying that this is something that has to be considered separate from what the RTM's instructions were in originally getting this land and then selling it to the water company, and it's a very serious issue. So, I do encourage you to support this sense of meeting resolution, and there's also an underlying fundamental issue of whether the RTM does have a legal right to sue the selectman for failure to follow the intent of the RTM back in the 50s. And this is serious, this is not a laughing matter, but has to do with really the authority of how the RTM is structured. So, this is something that we discussed at great length in District 8. So, it's not just a matter of, well, should we be on this side or that side? It has to do with how the town's governance works, and how the, how we make decisions as an RTM, and who do we expect to follow that? Again, we give up, if we do not join this, we potentially lose the reverter, and that to me is a very important right that was established and brought forward in the RTM in the 50s, which we, I feel, have an obligation as a town, not just the RTM and the first selectman's office, or the selectman's office, but as a town to uphold. Thank you.
Joan Pankowski, District 1, to be followed by Robert Luzey.
Thank you, fellow members, guests, and chairman. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I am in distress about the fact that there are people at the RTM who say, "Let's not get involved in town affairs. This is our town. Why are we sitting here? Why are we members of the RTM?" I feel that this, there was an RTM in 53 that put conditions on that. As a member of the land use, we had people come to us and say, "We think the town should uphold the legal agreement it made." I cannot stand here and not think, the legal department knows how to read. I'm not a lawyer. I wish I were. I don't know what the selectmen think. I wish I were a lawyer, that I could go and say, "Do your homework. Read the deed. Do something about this." As a member of the RTM, I want to uphold what the RTM in 53 said they wanted, the conditions. What else are we to do but to say, "Please, Mr. Selectman, listen to the deed. Please, Mr. Lawyer, the law department, do your job and uphold our deed."
Ms. Pankowski, please direct all comments through the chair.
I'm sorry. Would you please ask the selectmen?
Okay. I'll take that as a rhetorical request. Thank you.
All right. Please let my sentiments be known.
Thank you.
But thank you very much. And please, please, listen to the people who talked to us in 53.
Robert Luzey, to be followed by Michael Watzke.
Hello, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. I'm Robert Luzey from 16 Chestnut Street. I'd like to thank the RTM Districts 8 and 12, Land Use and Legislative and Rules and Health and Human Services Committees, for moving this issue forward to this General Assembly, and for all of you here today for considering our cause. Just want to remind everyone here that the town made the decision to be a defendant, not us. It was the selectmen that did that. We want to work with the town, but when we asked the town to enforce the deed restriction, despite Selectman Marzullo's repeated efforts to do so, to help us, Mr. Tessie and Mr. Theis refused. What I think is really important, it hasn't been discussed so far here today, is a couple of things, and I'll try not to be repetitive. Why do we need the town on our side? Some of you might just be thinking, "Oh, well, these guys have their lawsuits, the neighborhood's funding it. Let the town sit back, let the neighbors handle it." But because the town granted the deed with the restriction back in 1952, since they granted it, the town has the undisputed standing to enforce it, whereas us, the neighbors, we think we do, but it's not, our case is not nearly as strong on standing unless the town joins us. And if, and if we don't have standing, then the case can be thrown out, and we never even get to challenge a deed restriction. So, I believe it's very important to have the town on our side here. We feel very confident, once we get to interpretation of the exclusivity of the restriction, we feel very confident about that issue. So far, we've asked First Selectmen Tessie and Theis why they're not supporting us, and we haven't gotten any answers. They've, they've told us to date that they deferred to their lawyers. Well, John Fox was at the RTM Legislative and Rules Committee last week, and he cited two reasons. He said that the deed restriction does not use the word exclusive. I think enough has been said about that so far. I guess the one thing I'll add is, there's only one other Aquarian facility in Greenwich, and it went to trial court, and Supreme Court confirmed a summary judgment against Verizon. And I'll go to the next topic. The cost. The total cost of the town being a plaintiff is likely far lower than being a defendant. John Fox's comments at the RTM Legislative and Rules Committee last week were that it would be more expensive for the town to be a plaintiff, because it might require the use of expert witnesses. However, this case is not about cell tower technology or opinions of engineers, it's about interpretation of a deed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Watzke, to be followed by Lee Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. You should reject this resolution. Various speakers have referred to a deed restriction that limits the use of the land to water supply purposes only or exclusively. Those of you who have read the deed know that the language of the deed does not include the word "only" or "exclusively." An incidental use of the land for a cellular antenna atop the existing water tower does not seem to me to be precluded, as long as it doesn't interfere with the water supply purposes. The Morgan Bresser case, that has been cited as having substantially the same deed language, does not in fact have the same deed language, if you read the language. Two things bother me about this resolution. First, we're constantly worried about spending the town's limited resources. This would be a waste of town resources to get involved with this suit as a plaintiff. And second, the idea that everything that is not expressly permitted is prohibited. To me, that is an idea that is anathema in a free society. Again, I reject, I urge you to reject this resolution.
Lee Higgins, to be followed by Betsy Fruman.
One other name that I have not mentioned.
Was there a, was there a sign-up list for this?
No. There's a sign-up line over there.
Oh.
All right. Mr. Theis, not necessary. Mr. Theis, not necessary.
Mr. Moderator, RTM, I'm Lee Higgins. Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to clarify one point that Mr. Luzey didn't get to finish, and that is because it's a, it's a decision on language and land use, there would be no expert witnesses and provide no additional cost to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Fruman, to be followed by John Bowman.
Mr. Moderator, members, on this past Thursday at our district meeting, District 9 took a vote on this item, something that we've never done before, but there was enough feeling that we wanted to express to you that District 9 supports the resolution as amended by the Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you. John Bowman.
Information?
All right, Mr. Bowman passes. Mr. Boutel, what is your point of information?
Before Mrs. Fruman, Lee, she reported that her district took a vote, can we hear what that vote was?
Ms. Fruman, what was the vote that was taken?
10 in favor, 1 opposed, 2 abstentions.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bowman passed. David Theis, our first selectman.
Our selectman. I'm sorry. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I didn't mean to jump out of line there, but I have to say, as a third-generation resident of this town, and having gone to school here, there's nobody who cares more, has done more for his fellow citizens than I. And so, I reject out of hand the personal attacks that I and my colleagues have experienced tonight. We have relied solely on the judgment of learned counsel, who has advised us that, although there's been much talk about the language, the original agreement document from the Planning and Zoning Committee did not transfer appropriately enough, I wish it had, but it hasn't, to the actual deed. Now, not being a lawyer, I rely on the advice and counsel of Mr. Fox and his team. The one missing component here, and I really wish it wasn't missing, is a word explicit that was not left or added to the deed. Now, I'm told that in a court of law, that that is what the judge will rely on and turn to. So, at this point in time, my personal position is that it is now a legal, a legal decision, not a legislative decision. So, it's not that we don't want to support our neighbors, I don't want to support my neighbors, and Peter Tessie doesn't want it. We just want to know that, everybody to know that the language is deficient. I wish it wasn't, but I think that it is. So, thank you very much. That's all I had to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Pazluzny, District 8, to be followed by Michael Spilow, District 11.
Good evening. I just want to make one point. I have designed facilities, facilities that have a multiplicity of functions and utilities, facilities that have produced products where you have to separate finished goods from raw materials, where you have to separate electrical systems away from water systems. And one thing that very much concerns me here that hasn't been addressed is, this is a freshwater supply tank, and there's a company that has nothing to do with water supply, water treatment, water protection, water rights for our safe water drinking situation. To be allowing somebody that's a telecommunications company to affix equipment onto our freshwater supply equipment is an absurdity. They should be separated. If they were proposing on another part of the property away from this equipment, where their people don't touch our freshwater supply equipment, where they have no knowledge or expertise, that's one thing. But they're asking to affix their equipment to another system that has nothing to do with their proposed need. And I do not want that equipment attached to anything that has anything to do with my freshwater supply. The wisdom of 1952 is those people understood that that water supply system needed to be protected, protected from people that don't understand it, have other interests other than protecting that system of our freshwater supply, and take that seriously, consider that. Thank you.
Michael Spilow, followed by Mr. Von Keiseling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I think one issue that hasn't been considered is the actual fiscal issue, which is that there are substantial revenues attached to a typical cell tower lease, and based on my experience, that runs anywhere from $20,000 a month and up, and that revenue would go to the water company in this case, and I don't believe it should. I believe that revenues from ancillary uses of town property should come to the town, and that we should strive to protect those revenues, particularly since they could be fairly substantial in this case. Thank you.
Chris Von Keiseling, to be followed by David Detchin of District 10.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's not often I disagree with my esteemed selectmen, but on this case, I must. It's not often I disagree with my esteemed selectmen, but on this case I must. First of all, I should announce to you that both Districts Eight and Districts Twelve voted unanimously on this resolution to support it. I think that's, remember, two districts, and we have now District Nine, that's three districts. That's probably about 40 percent of the RTM is already in favor of this, and strongly. The problem we have here is not what's been talked about before. The problem we have here is the power of the RTM. What we are talking about here is the municipal improvement process. As you well know, we've had a number of them lately. When the town wants to do something with a piece of property, it has to go to the P&amp;Z to get its okay. And the P&amp;Z issues a municipal improvement permit, which allows the town to go ahead. This is before sale, change, whatever, change of use, anything to do with it. And you know the P&amp;Z. They always put conditions on anything. Anybody's been through the process, I've never seen a P&amp;Z saying, yes, that's fine, go and be well. The MI can always be referred to the RTM by any one property owner in the town, any one property owner, we've seen that. If the RTM agrees, it's up to the RTM whether that permit is agreed to or not, or put further conditions on it. That's the municipal, and the RTM is the last say on the disposition of town property. If there's no referral to the RTM, then the permit stands with its conditions as is. Hearing no objections, so to speak, the P&amp;Z permit stands. There's a 30-day appeal period, which again, was exhausted and not implemented here. In 1953, the P&amp;Z put conditions clearly, requiring exclusive use for water, and two other conditions, one that was screening for the, for a tower, water tank, and the other was something that said they wanted the maintenance of the natural scenic beauty of the area. It's also interesting that both these deeds, the one that was discussed by Kip Bergweger, which was, many of you know, is the water tower in King Merritt, just to identify for you, both deeds were executed in 1953. In a deed, you do not necessarily have to put the actions of the RTM in the deed, the conditions. The, the governing document is the MI permit. If the, if the, if the selectmen by inaction allow a transfer of property rights without RTM action, by simply doing nothing, they have gutted your authority.
Thirty seconds.
And that's precedent on one. If the court rules no on the deed restriction, then the transfer is in default of the P&amp;Z MI permit and the RTM's rule. So either they're, whether we're sued one way or sued another way, you'll get a suit for writ of mandamus for the town to act in accordance with its P&amp;Z MI. So why not defend the right that we already have, why not go through the process? I don't see any great difference in the expense, and I certainly would like to see the town defend the homeowners and the, and the citizens' interest rather than the water companies. Thank you.
David Detchin, to be followed by Christine Edwards.
Well, I thought I'd provide some historical background on the Morgan Besser case, since I was one of the co-presidents of the King Merritt Community, Inc., when the Morgan Besser case was litigated. And in fact, we did approach the town to ask the town if they would carry the torch for us, and they declined, and we approached them informally, we didn't, we just simply had some conversations with some town officials. And the, the two reasons we got were, number one, it's a hopeless case, these things, these cell towers go through, there's no way to stop them, and it's kind of a waste of time. And the other one was, we don't really have a dog in this hunt, and we really don't want to incur the costs. And really, the only way we could get into this thing would be if we would, for example, deny the permits, and then have Calco, that's what it was back then, sue us, and then we'd get the matter litigated, and they, so the town respectfully declined. Fortunately, because it was a subdivision, the adjoining neighbors, the people who owned the lots immediately adjoining, had standing, and they were able to bring the suit. Now, interestingly enough, in the deed that granted the property, it also had a reverter clause, just like this one, but interestingly enough, like this one, it did not use the adverb solely or exclusively in regard to saying that it was to be water supply purposes or purposes incidental or accessory thereto. And I certainly, as a lawyer, saw that as the vulnerability of, of the particular case, that we ran the risk that the court would say, well, since it wasn't limited solely to that, it, it has, the Calco has the opportunity to do otherwise. Interestingly enough, to my pleasant surprise, the, the trial court and the Supreme Court said that that was not dispositive, that in fact, it was in fact limited strictly to water supply and purposes incidental to water supply. That particular lawsuit ended up being financed by the plaintiffs, by the King Merritt Community, Inc., which contributed money, and by some of us who lived in the neighborhood and thought the cause was right and just. At the time, Calco was such a god-awful arrogant and obnoxious neighbor-
Thirty seconds.
-that there were no problems raising money to litigate against Calco.
Christine Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and colleagues and guests tonight. It's interesting to note, following our last speaker, that the need to use the word exclusive or only was not required, just enough to say that this was for water purposes, so that's number one. Sometimes in law, you don't have to have the exclusive or only, it's inherent in the language itself, especially in something that was built for water purposes, and as we said, we don't want to see a 7-Eleven there. Maybe be convenient, but not a good place. Secondly, we know that one of the issues that's always come up about these cell towers is that we can't even look at the issue of health. It's out of the picture. And yet, in Russia, when, long ago, the US Embassy was being besieged with having microwaves focused on them, that was a condition that the US government was certainly concerned about. And even though it cannot be on the table, it should be something that we have to think about, and certainly the neighbors are thinking about that. And there's a good concern, I think, with a number of people who would join in the lawsuit whether or not we do it individually and join and support the homeowners there. There's also a question that cellphone technology has certainly changed. Those of you who want to Google, giggle would be good too, but Google CNN and look at what is replacing cell towers, which is a box about this big, as a repeater, which takes this whole technology really off the table. This is old technology. And those of you who know something with regard to what is moving forward with cell technology, this is really old stuff. And no sooner could we put this in than it was completely not necessary to have. So that's another aspect. The comment on how much one could get for this, I know that in a high-rise an aunt lives in, their total amount for the use of having some cell tower signal equipment put on was less than $2,000 a month that they were offered as a condominium. It sounds great at $20,000, oh, another profit source for us as a, even a town, let alone Aquarian. But still, you have to look at old technology versus new technology, and the shift, and really the need for this, where you may be putting on equipment that is out of date by the time it's even put on, because it's out of date right now. So that's something to look at, but certainly, I think we have to go back to Kip's very, very strong support that we have to have for property, how it's disposed of, and how we protect it from the town. And I think the biggest issue we have to look at here is the RTM-
Thirty seconds.
-thank you, is to really support how deeds are written, what we have to give up if we do not support the homeowners in this lawsuit, and allow potential properties from being interfered with in the future. Thank you for your time.
Further discussion on Item Five? Sir, would you like to speak? Yes.
Hi. I'm Tom Agresta, I live on the river, I've lived there since 93. And I first want to say to Mr. Tice, please don't hurt the rest of us. I believe in you, I do trust you, and I do support you. Just because of one person giving you a personal attack, it's not right, but I know the rest of us are behind you, as we are behind the whole group. Some of these folks asked me, you know, talked about the loss of property value, which will in turn, the loss of revenue in taxes. But what I suggest is, forget that. Everyone, take a visit to that spot if you've never been there. It is one of the best spots, the most beautiful spots, the Mayanish River is one of the jewels of this town, and it's a very passive park, very passive area. And the reason I am contributing to, with my money, to this suit, is I'm tired of out-of-state corporations coming in and taking advantage of us, telling us what we need. I am tired of citing councils who really don't know who we are, and I'm tired of Hartford taking my hard money that I earn and not giving it back, and then seeing us as a cash cow. So that's pretty much spite, but as far as the deed goes, I think we should uphold the deeds, because if we give that up, we're gonna, we give up what we cherish the most, which is our land. So please, support this. Wish I could be more, you know, precise, but that's how I feel. Thank you.
All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number five, and proceed to poll your delegation. If you are in favor of the sense of the meeting resolution encouraging the town to oppose construction of a cell tower, you should vote in favor. If you are against that sense of the meeting resolution, you should vote no. I have the result of the vote on Item Number Four, which was the Teamster contract. Those in favor, 145. Opposed, 36. Abstaining, 10. That item has carried. Item Six now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. We resolve that the RTM accept a gift in the amount equal to the actual cost, not to exceed $850,000, from the Greenwich Point Conservancy to complete a full renovation of the interior and exterior space of the Greenwich Point North Concession Building, known as Old Barn. Further resolve that the aforementioned gift be funded by the Greenwich Point Conservancy upon approvals by the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Parks and Recreation to properly execute the restoration.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item Six has been moved and seconded. Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow members. The Parks and Recreation Committee met Tuesday night to take up Item Six. Joe Cicliano, Director of Parks and Recreation, presented the proposal. Chris Dodara, a board member of the Greenwich Point Conservancy, who has been the architect for the project, was present and reviewed the architectural drawings with the committee. Some points. The building to be restored is the barn, built in 1887. It is the oldest remaining building at Greenwich Point. The barn, a U-shaped building, after it is restored, will be integrated with the previously renovated Innis Arden Cottage. It will be faced with stone and shingle, and the building will be open in the center so that the water and sky can be viewed from the road. The barn will be more closely resembling the Innis Arden Cottage, with diamond windows, will have open rafters as it did in the original design, will still house the food concession bathrooms and a new outdoor dining patio, which can be used by anyone, whether or not you bring your picnic basket or purchase food from the food concession. And Parks and Recreation will continue to operate the building. Changes will include a new drop-off location. Most of the existing parking, except for handicapped, will move to the other side of the road, where a new turnaround will be constructed with a path that will provide for a pathway with paving stones that may be purchased and personalized. This is a major fundraising event for the Greenwich Point Conservancy, with the goal of raising $300,000 by selling of 1,500 pavers at $200 each. The traffic pattern will change, but we were assured that Melissa Evans from the Traffic Division was consulted and has reviewed it thoroughly. The resolution language says a gift not to exceed $850,000, but in reality, we were told the actual cost is probably around $600 to $750, but the $850 figure allows for overruns. The Greenwich Point Conservancy currently has $100,000 in the bank, hopes to raise another $200,000 with their summer beach ball event, and as mentioned, will sell the personalized paving stones, hoping to raise $300,000. In addition, a primary donor has been identified to assist in completing the fundraising effort. The timing. The project will not start until the funds are raised. If the funds are raised as planned this summer, the work on the barn will begin in October 2012, with the goal of completing the work in 12 months. If the project does run into the summer of 2013, temporary bathrooms and a concession location will be provided for. DP, other details. DPW will have the final say, the project must meet their standards. Oversight will include Chris Frankel from the Greenwich Point Conservancy and Alan Manelli, Superintendent of Buildings. The project has been reviewed by the First Selectman and the Board of Parks and Recreation. Our committee was informed that the Board of Parks, Board of Parks and Recreation has unanimously approved the project, but that their vote on the engraved paving stones was only 5-4. They had some concern as to whether or not the pavers would be in keeping with the original intention of Greenwich Point. A light word from me would say they should be more concerned about what's going to happen to the pavers when the next hurricane comes through. They will not be personalized. Our committee, there was no strong concern over the new traffic pattern that would be designed, or the paving stone initiative, from our committee. It was noted that personalized paving stones have been used for other buildings, for instance, the Cos Cob Library. Our vote, 11-0-0, District Twelve was absent. I'd like to add, subsequently, I spoke to Joe Cicliano today, who has informed me and assured me that the project will require review by many town agencies. For those concerned about the details of the traffic pattern, this should alleviate some of their worries, as I am sure that the revised pattern will be thoroughly vetted by the appropriate agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. The Finance Committee met on this item and voted 11-0-1. District Five recused because he's an officer on the Greenwich Point Conservancy. So the Finance Committee supports this item.
Discussion on Items, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have a motion, District Six. Colleen Jenkins, Chair of District Six.
Good evening. District Six is old Greenwich, and Greenwich Point is within our district, and many of us frequent the park, sometimes once a day. So we have a familiarity, as well as many other residents. So we have a, a resolution that amends the current resolution to read, "Further resolved that a thorough review of the traffic and pedestrian patterns connecting the Innis Arden Cottage and the Old Barn be conducted, including third-party professional reviews and a public hearing held by the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Parks and Recreation, before the final traffic and walkway plans are approved by the town authorities." Thank you very much. I believe other people will speak to this motion.
All right. That being offered on behalf, Ms. Jenkins, do we have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. That being offered on behalf of one of our districts, it does not require a second. Is there a request to read the language of that again? Does anyone need to hear that again? Yes. What is now before us is a motion to amend Item Six as follows. To add the following paragraph. Further resolved that a thorough review of the traffic and pedestrian patterns connecting the Innis Arden Cottage and Old Barn buildings be conducted, including third-party professional review and a public hearing held by the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Parks and Recreation, before the final traffic and walkway plans are approved by town authorities. Okay, that is now currently before us. Discussion on that District Six motion to amend. Could someone rise who's making this? Mr. Edwards, what is your point of information?
It may be the Department of obvious department, but is this a further, further resolution or to replace the further resolve?
No, this is to add, let's see, we are in this, we are on Item Six, which has two paragraphs. The first one begins, "Resolved." The first one begins "resolved," the second one begins "Further Resolved," and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Jenkins, but this would add a third paragraph beginning "Further Resolved."
Further, further.
No, not "Further, further." Mr. Von Keisling, what is your point of information?
For you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask, I guess, the Parks Chairman, the Director here, if this process will go through the usual towns, the land use permit process whereby they will do all the traffic, any of the issues that are raised?
All right. Mr. Von Keisling, I will put you on the speaker list. You may come to the microphone when I call you for that purpose. Discussion on the District 6 motion to amend item six. Mr. Porter, District 6.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think that District 6 is very familiar with the process that's being used with regard to this being basically a gift-in-kind, where the oversight on the gift-in-kind will be done by Parks and Rec and the Department of Public Works, and for that reason, both of those departments are identified in the resolution. However, nothing that I have heard, and nothing that I know relative to the process, has been said with regard to the liability of the traffic pattern that has been established. If through the whole process that's dealt with the way my understanding is it should be, then that would be mitigated. If it is not, it won't be mitigated, and therefore, through you, Mr. Moderator, I simply ask if someone can clarify that, either from the Law Department or from the Department of Parks and Recreation.
All right. Could you just, what are you looking for clarification on?
Clarification of the liability with regard to the current proposal for the traffic pattern, the new traffic pattern.
Is there anyone who is able to respond to that? Joe Cicliano, Director of Parks and Recreation.
The plan, excuse me, the plans that were reviewed by the RTM are the preliminary plans, and the, the schematic that you saw out in front there also is preliminary, in the sense that we still have Planning and Zoning, MI, and whatever other town agency that we're gonna be referred to, to go through the review process. So obviously, Mr. Porter is correct. Some of that liability of the traffic patterns would be mitigated through that process. As for the preliminary design, there were three separate meetings with our traffic technician, Melissa Evans, and we took her advice, and that there has been some modifications already done in the preliminary drawings and diagrams that people have seen. So moving forward, we'll go through the full review process for various agencies within the town.
Thank you. Michael Carter, District 6, to be followed by Arlene Lamazo, District 6.
Michael Carter, District 6. First, I'd like to commend and thank Greenwich Point Conservancy for doing what the town seems unable or unwilling to do, that is, maintain and restore our historic buildings. That being said, I rise in support of accepting the gift with the proposed amended language. While I look forward to the historic refurbishment of the Old Barn along the lines of the Innis Arden Cottage, I have significant reservations regarding the site plan of the space between the structures, which I believe require further public vetting, and the help will be reconsidered. The proposed site plan is not an historic reconstruction of the original site condition, and therefore requires more scrutiny to justify a change in the existing condition. I believe that converting the existing parking lot into a drop-off will in fact increase the amount of crossing traffic, as all users at all times of the year will now be required to cross traffic into and out of this area, possibly twice per visit. Currently, for most of the year, excluding busy summer weekends, drivers can cross traffic once, pull in and park, effect being both less car crossing and less pedestrian crossing now than would be after the change. While I appreciate the need for a paved pathway, if you have to convert to a drop-off, I highly question designing the pedestrian path to cross the vehicular route, not once, but twice, to get to the island and then back again, when no crossing is needed to link the two historic structures. Further, I believe that people drive more cautiously in a parking lot than they do in the drop-off zone. I suggest you go to watch the morning drop-off at the Greenwich High School and see if you agree with me. Thirdly, I question the proposed choice of paving and donor naming materials. To the best of my knowledge, these materials do not exist at the beach now, and are not in keeping with the type of stone materials characteristic of the historic structures and the old wall and gate remnants. Assuming that a fundraising acknowledgement is necessary, I would consider something more traditional, such as a bronze donor plaque affixed on or near the barn itself. Again, thank you.
Arlene Lamazo, to be followed by Jim Buttel, District 2.
Mr. Moderator, members and guests, I'm Arlene Lamazo from District 6. You've heard the resolution, or the resolved clause that we are adding to what's in your call. The only aspect I wish to draw to your attention is the comment in that resolution or resolved clause that calls for a public hearing. We put that in specifically because although we are District 6, and Todd's Point is in District 6, and we were urged by the architect to simply act on it, because it's in our district, we said no. We said Todd's Point is a gem, not just for us in District 6, it's the gem that everybody in Greenwich adores, and everybody in Greenwich should have an opportunity to look at the plans, to talk about it, and the public hearing would give you that opportunity. We did not put the public hearing in there so that there would be a furor of opposition, or that we'd get out of hand and everybody would be shouting for one thing or another. It was just so that the public could weigh in on what's being proposed, and take into account some of the issues that Mr., I'm gonna draw a blank, that the previous speaker brought to your attention about crossing back and forth across vehicular driveways, and all of that. Those things may be worked out, but you still ought to have an opportunity to weigh in on this. Thank you.
Jim Buttel, District 2, to be followed by George McBride, District 6, speaking on the motion to amend.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, if I can just recollect what one former member said many, many years ago, when we accepted the statutes that now reside in Bruce Park, Fred Subley rose to the microphone and says, "Don't look a gift horse in the mouth." My concern here, Mr. Moderator, is we're adding to the cost of the project as we add this resolved. This gift is limited to $850,000. What happens if the project now exceeds that cost? So through you, Mr. Moderator, to the donors, I would ask, would they foresee this resolution driving the cost of this project above $850,000, as that is the limit of the gift in this resolution?
All right. If there is someone to represent the donors, we can hear from them shortly. George McBride, District 6, to be followed by Candace Garthwaite.
George McBride, District 6. I rise to oppose my own district's resolution or the amendment, and for a very simple reason, I think it's unnecessary. Three reasons: One, who's going to pay for the outside traffic study? Is the town of Greenwich going to pay for it, even though we have a perfectly competent and professional traffic department? Or are we going to foist it on to the gift giver, who's giving a gift to the town, as if they're some kind of a deep-pocketed developer? They're not. They're just friends of Greenwich Point, giving a wonderful gift to the town. Second, this plan is a great improvement over what exists now. It removes 15 spaces that face the, face the beach side, the water side, and it, and those spaces have cars there that block the view, and create problems when people try to circle that twice, looking for that one little exclusive spot in the 15 spaces on this side, when all the other parking spaces are on the cove side. It opens up the view by eliminating this parking on that side, so that when you enter the park, you see the water, and it will become beautiful. So it removes the spaces and reserves it only for handicap parking and for drop-off. So let's give some credit to Melissa Evans and our traffic department. They have been looking at this and giving input from the very beginning, and they've reviewed it. So let's not delay the restoration of this, of this beautiful building by another overkill traffic study. I mean, what would a concrete fly bridge overpass solve all the problems? Sure, it would, but that would be total overkill. So I would urge you to oppose this amendment as totally unnecessary.
All right. Once again, if there is someone representing the donors who would like to respond to Mr. Buttel's question about impact on cost of this project, if this were to be adopted, I invite you to come forward. Candace Garthwaite, District 6, to be followed by Steve Orzoa, District 9.
Good evening. Again, Candace Garthwaite. I was at the District 6 meeting, obviously, and was concerned about the pedestrian traffic, but it suddenly struck me this evening that when I ride my bicycle down at Greenwich Point, it's really pretty terrifying when you have drivers who aren't used to dealing with bikes in very close quarters. So if you have a drop-off area, you're gonna have cars making a left turn, which is gonna stop all the traffic again. This would be after the gatehouse. And then you're gonna have cars attempting to get back into that stream of traffic, and if you add not only pedestrians, but if you add in bicycles to that equation, I can tell you as a biker, this is a terrifying concept, because there's just not enough room for all of that flowing circle of traffic. I compliment the Greenwich Point Conservancy, the redesign of the barn is beautiful, absolutely, it should be accepted, it's stunning. I know all of this is done with their love of the area and the historic significance of these buildings, and they truly are in disrepair. But please, pay attention to the safety issues with this redesign. It looks beautiful on the table out there, but if you've ever ridden your bike down at Greenwich Point, I ask you to keep that in mind, and, and don't forget that the children's museum is now in the larger building, and that means that children are gonna be crossing this traffic twice to get over there to the museum building. So children, bikers, pedestrians, please keep all of these things in mind. Thank you.
Steve Orzoa, District 9, to be followed by Denise Savageo, Conservation Director.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests. I'm of two minds with, with the amendment. I think it is vitally important that we secure safety for pedestrians and motorists. I am concerned with several of the words in the amended resolution. The District 6 motion calls for third-party professional review, and I'm deeply concerned that that will add unnecessary costs. We have already heard from Mr. Cicliano, who's the head of the Department of Parks and Rec, that he and Ms. Evans and the appropriate authorities within the town are already looking at the traffic issues. So when it is appropriate, Mr. Moderator, I will offer an amendment to the amendment.
All right. Procedurally, Mr. Orzoa, while secondary amendments are permitted under Robert's rules, our practice has always been not to permit them because of the confusion that results. And what we can do is vote on this, and if you then, depending on what the outcome of that vote is, you could then propose an amendment at that time.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Denise Savageo, Conservation Director, to be followed by Chris Franco of the Greenwich Point Conservancy.
Good evening. I thought it would be important for me to talk to you about the land use department, and I had a conversation with Diane Fox about this, about this proposal, and this is gonna be an application before Planning and Zoning, where it will be fully vetted, there will be a public hearing. So I guess one of the things I would say is for you to require a public hearing that's to be conducted by the Commissioner of Public Works. That's not usually where we do our land use, whether it be a school or other type of public facility. It's always handled by the land use department. That's where the public hearing takes place. They'll be working with Parks and Rec, with Department of Public Works in terms of Melissa Evans. So I'm not really sure this is a necessary amendment. I do understand where this came from, when we did the renovation of the Innis Arden Cottage, because we did not change the footprint of that building, and basically everything, once the shingling and whatever was done, but it was still within the footprint, that was maintenance of the building. The interior design, again, was maintenance of the building, and we did not change the use of that building. It had always, always been used by Sue Baker and Dan Barrett for environmental education, so we weren't changing the use of the building. So that was indeed a gift, and there was not, did not have to come to Planning and Zoning. This particular project, because it's not just about, you know, the footprint of a building in terms of a maintenance and restoration of a building, it actually is going to, you know, change the configuration, will need a site plan review and a coastal zone permit. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of this. I'm not sure because of that, that the amendment is, is necessary, since this should be fully vetted through the planning and zoning process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franco, if I may, before you begin to speak. I do have the result of the vote on item number five, so we can release the interested parties on that. Item five was the sense of the meeting resolution regarding the cell tower issue. Those in favor: 150; opposed: 33; abstaining: 10. That item is carried. And I also want to remind any interested speakers on the leaf blower ordinance, last call for speaker sign-up list, there is one, there was one placed outside on the table, and there is one at the front of the hall. Mr. Franco, of the Greenwich Point Conservancy.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I really didn't come with any, I didn't come with the intention of speaking tonight or with any prepared remarks, but I did want to address some of the questions.
This, right now, we're just dealing with this proposed motion to amend, so if you could limit your remarks. I think, I know Mr. Buttel had asked-
Surely.
-do you foresee any increased costs, and if you have any other comments related to the motion to amend?
Well, the things that I worry about are increased cost, as well as, you know, the timing of all this, because assume, we're, we're a relatively modest organization, we, we raise money, we do have some, we do have some large donations that are given, but largely, we have, you know, all sorts of folks around town that, that do different things for us. So I would, I would be concerned if we were asked to do a traffic study, for example, because that isn't something that we've budgeted for. I have no idea what that costs, and frankly, we've worked very closely with the town. We did not initiate this, this design ourselves. This was done with the town. I should point out that there's already a traffic circle there. There's a traffic circle in front of the Innis Arden Cottage, and then there's the parking lot, which is adjacent to the Old Barn. And in working with the town, that one of the concerns was that now that the Seaside Center has moved to the Innis Arden Cottage, and that the Old Barn is gonna be restored, there's, there's been a tendency for children and adults and people to just wander through that parking lot over towards the Innis Arden Cottage, because there's a lot of traffic going back and forth. So now you have children not crossing, you know, a defined area and walking along a sidewalk, but they're just wandering through a parking lot, which is a very tight parking lot. So the concern was primarily safety for children, to be quite frankly, to be quite frank, I should say. And, and to, and to have, you know, the town, the Parks and Rec Department had said that they had long been looking for an opportunity to put a proper, proper drop-off and pickup area. There's been an interest in a lot of residents in having showers, because when we did the renovation of the Innis Arden Cottage, we lost showers, so that's been provided for in this area. So the area, the intent was to really make this an area that would serve the community and the specific needs that, that people have. That was by, by far the primary goal, and, and we worked, you know, with the town to come up with that. So, and again, I would defer to the town. If, if in the course of doing, you know, additional work, that there would be changes that need to be made, then that's fine. We don't have any particular dog in this hunt, other than to really do what works well for the community. So that's, that, you know, that said, to the extent that you want us to do traffic studies and have preparations for public hearings, I really don't know what's entailed with that, and that may or may not fit within our budget, and it may or may not impact whether we can go forward at this time. I really don't know. I will also say just a word about the path with the pavement. I will also say just a word about the path with the pavers. Somebody said that it wasn't materials that are sort of native to the point, and I would like to just correct that because, in fact, these pavers are granite, which is indigenous to the point. They're a sand-colored granite so that they will look essentially like the sand. I think somebody, you know, called attention to the fact that there will be storms, and in fact, I'm sure there'll be, you know, sand blowing on the pavers and whatnot. But that's, our goal always has been to honor the natural beauty of the point and to not try to make it look, you know, more formal than it should. So these pavers are very natural-looking. And in fact, a lot of folks have said that they think it's a really good idea because instead of having things all over the point that have, a lot of people in town would like to have some sort of reference point, memorial. So instead of having memorials all over the point, it's a relatively confined area where for a relatively small amount of money, people can do something if they want to honor a loved one or something of that nature. So, and this has been done at the Greenwich Hospital, it's been done at the libraries in town, it was done at, you know, River House, it's done at the Boys and Girls Club. It's just a reality of fundraising, and this is actually a pretty big fundraising item for us. So if we were to not have that, that would blow a big hole in our budget and also would set us back. So these are just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. We're very, very grateful to the support that we've gotten, and we've gotten incredible support from all, you know, groups. So, well, in any case, thank you very much.
All right. If you do want to come back and speak later, you'll have that opportunity. But I want to call for the vote now on the District Six motion to amend item six. Now, you heard Mr. Orzoa earlier express a desire to take out the reference to a third-party professional review. So right now, we are voting on the amendment that includes this reference to a third-party professional review. If we were to adopt this amendment, I would call on Mr. Orzoa then to offer a motion to amend it. If we were to turn this down, if he wanted to offer an amendment without that, I would also give him that opportunity. And he's shaking, he said he would not. All right. So do we understand? If you, I will read it one more time. The motion to amend item six reads as follows. Add a third paragraph. Further resolved that a thorough review of the traffic and pedestrian patterns connecting the Innis Arden Cottage and old barn buildings be conducted, including third-party professional review, and a public hearing held by the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Parks and Recreation before the final traffic and walkway plans are approved by town authorities. If you are in favor of adding that language to item six, you should vote in favor of this motion to amend. If you are against adding that language, you should vote no. So I ask the district chairs to please mark your voting cards. District Six, motion to amend item six, and proceed to poll your delegation. Now, we'll need to await the result of that before we can take any further vote, but we can, while we are voting, continue discussion on item six if there are any speakers who would like, in general, to comment on this acceptance of a gift. Are there any speakers who would like to comment on item six?
Point of information, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Butel.
May I ask the previous speaker, another executive director in town, what the cost is of one of these bricks and how I can get one?
$200. Is that correct? And how many names can we, or there was characters, as I recall, right? Certain limit of the number of characters per line. We have plenty of characters, yes. All right. Sir, did you want to make-
You're limiting characters, I can't buy one for voluntarily?
Continuation of the discussion.
Yes, we are, if there are any interested speakers to comment? Yes, sir, item six.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, and distinguished guests, Frank Cantelmo, many of you know me, I think, live on Kiawfrum in Old Greenwich. Although I'm a member of various committees in this town, I'm not speaking on behalf of any of those committees. I'm speaking on behalf of me and what I feel. First of all, let me congratulate Chris Franco and the architects and everyone for such a wonderful plan to raise one structure, that old bathroom, and to refurbish, if you will, and bring back to its original beauty the old barn. And I know many of us agree wholeheartedly with that. The one objection that I have is not necessarily signage in general, but the type of signage on these particular, I call them tombstone-like granite blocks. I think it's not really in keeping with the character of the point, even though some distinguished speakers have mentioned that they'll be covered over during the next hurricane. I personally do not want to wait for the next hurricane. So I would like to suggest something, that people would like their names connected with things. Where do we stop? Do we sign the trees? Do we sign benches? Do we sign all these things? Or do we take a step back? And I know I've been involved in sound waters over the years, and what we decided to do at one point was, you know, maybe little plaques, maybe mosaics or something, in the building, on the wall, and discreetly placed, and everyone can say, you know, I've given, I'm a sponsor, rather than have the name of a family that you're walking over on this island. I think it's a lot more respectful and a lot more in keeping with the point. And I hope you agree. So I'm here tonight as an ordinary citizen, but one who's passionate about the point. As some of you know, I teach a lot of courses down there, and I do a lot of free consulting to the town. So I do hope you would take my suggestions very, very seriously. I don't want to stop the idea of having something named so you can generate income, but this particular type of naming is what I object to. Thank you.
Further discussion in general on item six? All right. Seeing no interested speakers, we will await the tally of this vote on District Six motion to amend. So now might be a good time to get up and stretch. We do have an announcement, just internal information for those who might be interested in what's going on with the Land Use Committee. Peter Berg, Chairman.
So I should mention that the Land Use Committee elected Michael Carter of District Six as vice chair, replacing Peter Quigley, who resigned that post due to work demands. Peter Quigley remains on the RTM and remains on the Land Use Committee. Michael Carter had previously served as our vice chair. He was currently serving as the secretary. So with that, we elected a new secretary, Nancy Weisler, from District Five.
We have the result of the vote on the District Six motion to amend item six. Those in favor, 19; opposed, 168; abstaining, 2. That item has failed. All right. Any further motions or speakers? All right. Hearing no further interested speakers on item number six, I ask the district chairs to please mark your voting cards. I'm calling for the vote on item six. Though, I'm sorry, please mark your voting cards, item number six, and proceed to poll your delegation. All right. Item number seven now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that? Drew Marzullo, our selectman.
Okay. Attention to a less controversial subject, leaf blowers. Resolved, resolved that the representative town meeting consider acting an ordinance prohibiting the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers in the town of Greenwich during the month of August. Further resolved that the ordinance shall automatically expire on the one-year anniversary of its date of adoption unless otherwise re-adopted by you, the representative town meeting.
All right. And it is the same as appears on our call, correct? Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution on item seven? The resolution on item seven has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with our Legislative and Rules Committee and its chair, Doug Wells?
The Legislative and Rules Committee took this matter up last Monday evening. District One was absent. We were assisted in this matter by Drew Marzullo.
Excuse me, Mr. Wells. I'd ask our members to please take their seats quietly. Let's finish the voting on item six quietly and pay attention to our speakers. Mr. Wells?
Thank you. We had also Assistant Town Attorney Amina Ahmad help us with this, as well as, we also had the proponent Gretchen Biggs of Greenwich Citizens Against Leaf Blower Mania, the acronym COM, Greenwich COM. This matter generated a long and spirited discussion. Hopefully, that won't be repeated here tonight. Ms. Ahmad presented the ordinance to our committee. She advised that the ordinance had been in the works for the past couple of years. The organization COM had asked the Board of Selectmen to ban the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers for a period longer than a month. The Board of Selectmen held meetings, took in information, and this year created a working group that was headed up by Selectman Marzullo. The group met once and rendered its report to the Board of Selectmen. The Selectmen met in April and directed the Law Department to draft an ordinance that would, one, ban the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in the month of August; two, contain three tiers of penalties; and three, contain a one-year sunset clause that would give the town an opportunity to review the effects of the ordinance. And the Law Department worked with a subcommittee of three members of Legislative and Rules Committee to pass the ordinance as before you this evening. Ms. Ahmad explained that the Board of Health was not willing to propose modifications to the town's noise ordinance to ban leaf blowers for any period of time. The Board of Health believes that there is insufficient evidence of adverse health effects from the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers. Prior to our meeting, Ms. Biggs had contacted me and asked me to forward to our Legislative and Rules Committee members certain proposals for change that she had made to the ordinance. Those proposed changes and Attorney Ahmad's responses to those changes are laid out in the report that was published in the RTM website. I'm not going to go through it now because the long and short of it is, our committee adopted none of the resolutions for change that Gretchen Biggs had suggested to our committee. Several committee members stated that homeowners should also be cited in the event of a violation. One delegate observed that the police have no difficulty citing traffic and parking violations, could not understand why they could not issue citations to violators of this ordinance who are homeowners. It's clear that the ordinance, as it's drafted now, says it will be the operator of the gas-powered leaf blower that will be cited. That would be primarily landscapers or homeowners who are using the machinery themselves. Another delegate asked about the cost of enforcement. Ms. Ahmad said that there would be the cost of printing up the informational pamphlets that would be handed out to the homeowners or the landscapers who are using the equipment during the month of August. The Police Department will track the number of complaints received and citations issued during the month of August, and has already developed code enabling its computers to compile these results. However, it was explained that in the event that the Police Department received calls for emergencies, such as traffic accidents or more serious crimes, the priority, obviously, would be given to the more serious calls. One delegate noted that the ordinance seemed to apply almost exclusively to residences and questioned why there should be an ordinance that does not also apply to the town, the golf courses, and the other entities that are exempted from this statute. Gretchen Biggs, speaking on behalf of COM, explained that she's an attorney, and she thought that a challenge to the ordinance would be unsuccessful, even though one of our committee members thought that it would be deemed to be discriminatory since it seemed to only apply to residences and not these other entities. There then ensued a long discussion among our committee members regarding who should be cited and whether the language of the ordinance is clear as to who would be the violator. Some committee members were also of the view that a one-month ban would not be an accurate test of the ordinance. We then went through a series of motions on this, which, the first motion was from District Seven. They wanted to change the period of the ban from August of 2012 to a period from Memorial Day 2013 to Labor Day 2013. That motion failed by a vote of three to eight. Delegate from District Nine made a motion, seconded by the delegate from District Twelve, to insert the words "or cause to be operated" in the section entitled "Prohibited Activity", intending to be able to cite not only the landscaper, but the homeowner whose property was being blown by use of leaf blowers, so that you get two people who were fined for the same activity. That vote failed, the motion on that failed four, seven, zero. We did make a motion that was accepted by an 11-0-0 vote, and these were, as to Scrivener's errors, in the section entitled "Prohibited Activity," the lettering of the second paragraph should be changed from a C to a B. And in the section entitled "Exclusions," in Clause B, change the wording "Section 6B-29C" to "6B-2C." It was a typo to have the number nine in there. And in the section entitled "Expiration of Ordinance," delete the word "otherwise" from the second line. The vote on these was 11-0-0, as I said. The committee then voted on the legal order of the ordinance as amended. The vote was 10 in favor, one opposed, with District Ten voting no because the delegate believed that this ordinance will open up the town to litigation and because the ordinance is discriminatory. The committee then voted on the merits of the ordinance as amended. Our vote there was six in favor, five opposed, with Districts Two, Three, Four, Six, and Ten voting no. The reasons were expressed, that many believe that this is not an ordinance that would be supported by the majority of the town, that most people are perhaps not as offended by the noise as the proponents of COM for this, and there is also concern that no town agency views leaf blowers as a health issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening again. The Land Use Committee took this item up on May 31st. We were joined by Will Dunster, who is a local landscape business owner, Selectman Drew Marzullo, Amina Ahmad of the Town Attorney's Office, Police Chief James Hevy, I'm sorry, and Gretchen Biggs of the COM organization. Will Dunster started off, he had to leave to pick up his son at the airport. He said he understood the desire to control the impact of leaf blowers, particularly gasoline leaf blowers, and that some of his recommendations had been incorporated into this proposed ordinance, but he still felt there were some problems with, such as the use of the term "leaf blower," since blowers are used for many tasks, not just for blowing leaves. And he used the example of the need to clear tennis courts. Mr. Dunster also questioned the logic of the many exemptions of entities such as cemeteries. Mr. Dunster questioned how the first offense- Mr. Dunster questioned how the first offense warnings would be tracked. He noted that there are other machines beside gasoline-powered blowers that also make high-pitched noises. He asked, "Why are we targeting just blowers?" Furthermore, he noted that August is, is still an active month for yard maintenance. Um, he suggested that instead of another ordinance, uh, um, he preferred if neighbors could simply communicate with each other rather than call the police. And finally, Mr. Dunster thinks the proposed ordinance would likely lead to higher costs for landscape maintenance. Selectman Drew Marzullo explained that the Board of Selectmen asked the Law Department to draft this proposed ordinance. Town Council Amina Ahmad drafted the proposed ordinance by researching ordinances in other towns, and she was advised by a subcommittee of the RTM Legislative and Rules Committee. Gretchen Biggs of the Residence Organization COM pointed out that several nearby towns have seasonal restrictions on leaf blowers. Those towns include Ry, Scarsdale, Yonkers, um, Cambridge, Massachusetts, and many others, uh, which covered the whole summer or longer, uh, in the case of Yonkers. And, and this proposed ordinance was, uh, quite limited, um, a small inconvenience for the quality of life benefits. Uh, further, since it has a sunset provision, it will really just be a test to see if it's effective and acceptable. Police Chief Hevy explained that the proposed ordinance will be well-publicized in advance to landscape contractors and to the public. He expressed confidence that the Police Department can implement the ordinance. He stated that the police, the police computer system is already set up to record all complaint calls, uh, all warnings and citations issued. As previously reported, he said that, um, if they received a call, they would record the call, but if there was a, uh, emergency, they would respond to the emergency and not to the leaf blower. He stated that the cost to implement this ordinance, uh, is minimal. Uh, our discussion revolved around whether the ordinance was strict enough. Concern was expressed about the exclusions given to various institutions, such as private schools, given that they are big users. Uh, Ms. Ahmad noted two typographical errors which, um, uh, that, uh, which the Legislative and Rules also reported in, um, which, uh, which, uh, need to be corrected. Our, our vote on the, on the item was unanimous, twelve-zero-zero.
Thank you. Well, uh, yes, you're going to offer amendments?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee.
Um, on, um, the page three of the call, at the bottom, uh, there's a mislettering, uh, it, at the bottom, the, where it says "C," all terms and conditions of Chapter Six B, that should be "B," uh, and we made that amendment. Uh, on the next page, under the Section B, uh, entitled "Activities," uh, it should read "Six B dash, um, two C," delete the, uh, number nine. And in the very, uh, last line of the ordinance, where it says, "Of its date of adoption unless otherwise re-adopted," delete the word "otherwise."
All right, that is a motion to amend offered on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee. Is there any objection to those proposed amendments? Hearing none. They are adopted upon unanimous consent. Understand District Eight? Has a motion directed to item seven?
Yes.
Jenny Crowe, Chair of District Eight.
District Eight supports a motion to amend item seven to delete or remove the exclusions if you refer to page four of your call. At the top of that page, there is an exclusion under letter A for entities. This would include municipal entities, schools, religious institutions, membership clubs, golf courses, hospitals, retirement communities, and cemeteries. The rationale for our motion is that the ordinance will be made fairer and stronger if its impact is not limited to individual homeowners and their employees.
So do I understand this is to delete, um, paragraph A on the top of page four entirely?
That's correct.
And do we re-letter anything in there? We'll just deal with that later.
I suppose you would have to re-letter.
We'll, we'll deal with that later.
Once you do that.
Okay, so, uh, that being offered on behalf of District Eight, it does not require a second. The, and is currently before us. So right now, we will, uh, have discussion on the District Eight motion to amend item seven by deleting the exclusion for the entities that, uh, are spelled out one through eight under subparaphrase titled, entitled "entities." Discussion on the District, I'm sorry.
Point of information?
Yes.
Did she, I didn't hear, did she give a vote on how District Eight voted on this?
Do we know? Yes. I'm sorry, sixteen? Sixteen in favor, five against, zero abstaining. That was the District Eight vote on that proposed motion to amend. All right, discussion on the District Eight motion. Mr. Berg, District Eight.
So I was one of the District Eight members who didn't vote for this amendment, and, um, I'm here to urge that you not vote for it either. Um, I mentioned that there were, there were many meetings, um, that led to this proposed ordinance. There were several meetings of the Board of Selectmen. Um, one of the, one of them, our, the manager of our municipal golf course, Dave DeAndrea, uh, explained the need for leaf blowers to maintain the putting greens. Um, and, uh, he said, really, there is no alternative for him. Uh, so that's an example of, uh, why we need an exclusion for municipal entities, why we need an exclusion for private clubs, uh, which are on that list of, uh, exclusions. If you, uh, vote for this, um, amendment, uh, you're going to hear from all the golfers, and you're going to hear from, um, the town, um, so, um, and, and, uh, and other opponents. So I would urge you to vote against this amendment.
Further discussion on the proposed motion to amend item seven. Mr. Wells?
I also urge you to, to turn this down. If we have a, a big storm in August, and the town has got to go out and clear debris, do you want fifty employees out there with rakes cleaning this up?
Mr. Wells, there is an exclusion for storm cleanup. That would be separate.
Even so, that, you know, you're, you're, you're turning back the clock on this for, for all these other organizations that are, that are out there. Uh, the reality is, the reason they've accepted all these people is because this is a bad idea, and they just want to limit it to the neighborhoods, and, 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 um, so I would urge you to, to, to vote against this, regardless of whether there's storm. These people have not been heard from. You haven't had an opportunity to talk to these individuals who are in these organizations that are being exempted. It's unfair for them to have this passed at the last minute when they haven't had the opportunity to be heard on this.
Further discussion on the District Eight motion to amend. Dr. Carlson, District One. And I invite any interested speakers to come forward. You don't even have to stand in the aisle. You may come and sit in the chairs. Not that we want to make it too comfortable for you, but...
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, I recommend you turn down the District Eight motion. The reason I ask you to do this is that it'll be easier to get this, uh, uh, ban for one month through, uh, by having, uh, these exemptions, uh, put in there. What we really need, as far as District One is concerned, is that we have a ban, uh, during, uh, the warmest, some of the warmest time in the summer. I really would prefer July two, but we might not be able to get that. We have close to housing in District One, where the houses are very close to one another, and you really do get the problem with the leaf blowers, uh, when, uh, somebody decides, uh, to use them one day and then somebody else another day. It's a lot of annoyance, and it's really a quality of life issue, with the one exception of people like myself who suffer from asthma. It'd be very nice to have, uh, a good deal less, uh, leaf blower action. And, uh, where you have schools, uh, you don't have the people. But, uh, where you do have the people, I think you do need some ban, and let's have this ban, uh, for the month of August and see how it works.
Further discussion on the District Eight motion to amend. Mr. Von Keisling, are you interested in speaking? Mr. Von Keisling, District Eight. All right, go ahead, Mr. Von Keisling. Mr. Cavie, I will get to you momentarily.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Problem I have is that without the exclusions, uh, the test would be more accurate. Noise is noise, and barring emergency situations or some other valid reason, all such noise should be dressed the same. This ordinance is addressing noise, no other matter, not leaf blowers, nothing. The, the object here is to reduce noise. Noise is a factor of decibel level and whine, or pitch, as it arrives off-site in the adjacent property. I received a considerable education in this matter when I was an airport advisor to the First Selectmen and the Director of Air Conservation Trust. We worked, uh, dealing with, um, Westchester County Airport when they were expanding their service there. We worked with the county and federal agencies. Airplanes, jets, helicopters were all subjected to decibel ceilings as received on the ground. Noise level restrictions county, countrywide were partly the incentive to major engine redesign, which three generations of aircraft later has reduced aircraft noise emissions by magnitudes. All aircraft noise, not just one type of machine. There was a cost associated with the reduction of airport, aircraft noise emissions, and there will be a cost associated with limiting yard maintenance noise. The question is whether the method of enforcing noise pollution rules are draconian and clumsy or surgical and intelligent. There can be no logical basis for regulating noise which does not exceed certain levels.
Are you speaking on the motion?
Yes, I am.
To make the exclusion out?
I'm saying, without the exclusion, with the exclusion.
Okay.
This wouldn't hold. There could be no logical basis for regulating noise that doesn't, that exceeds certain levels. Certain, certainly that of ambient noise levels in the area, in other words, the normal level of noises. We do have noise ordinances on the books, which declare the acceptable noise, noise levels in neighborhoods. There are consequences for exceeding those legal limits for any excessive noise source. While actual enforcement is frustrated by circumstance, that is a matter of adjusting the means of enforcement, not the objective of the ordinance, which is the level of noise. All law restricts the ability and full freedom of the individual citizen. If the individual is to be held as the ultimate unit, unit of our citizenship, then the government has a strict responsibility not to abuse the individual any more than is absolutely necessary. Please adopt this amendment.
All right, Mr. Cavie, what was your point of information? Can anybody define "membership club"? I don't know. Gretchen Biggs, speaking on the, speaking on the District Eight motion to amend.
Good evening, members. Um, I'm not going to speak on the merits of having a leaf blower ban in general, and I hope I'll have a chance to speak briefly on that later. But just regarding the merits of this amendment, I urge you not to vote for the amendment. The, um, the ordinance as worded may or may not be imperfect and could be strengthened in the future, but it was reached, um, through a process of, um, deliberation and consensus. A lot of parties worked hard on this for two years. It's what we support at this time, so if you support doing something about, uh, leaf blowers and, um, taking this matter up again in the future and making a better law, perhaps, whatever, um, please do not vote for the amendment, just to vote for the ordinance as worded. Thank you.
Further discussion on the District Eight motion to amend. Mr. Cavie, if you would like to come up and make a point that it is ambiguous, you may do that. But what you may not do, when I, when I, uh, call on someone, I give them the right to speak, not to direct questions. There is no...
Any questions?
Pardon me? Who do you, who, who are you directing your question to?
Anybody, say, who have been drafted in?
Who's that? Mr. Fox, uh, would you care to respond to Mr. Cavie's question, uh, for a definition of membership clubs? Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Uh, the intent here for "membership club" was, uh, private clubs in town. Um, in working on this ordinance with, uh, the three members of the RTM Legislative and Rules Committee, uh, we had some discussion about that, but "membership club," the intent being, uh, private clubs in town with, uh, large pieces of property.
Thank you. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? District Eight motion to amend item number seven. If you are in favor of removing the exclusions that are currently contained in this for entities only, that is currently paragraph A, you should vote in favor of this motion to amend. If you want to leave the exclusions for municipal entities, et cetera, you should vote no. So I will ask our district chairs to please expedite the voting, as we will need to know the result of that before we can finally dispose of the item. But while we are conducting that vote, I ask the membership to vote quietly so that we can continue having discussion on item seven on the merits. So I will now open discussion on item seven. I do have interested speakers. All right, we will begin with Donald Landsman, uh, to be followed by Dr. Carlson. Donald Landsman, to be followed by Dr. Carl Carlson.
My name is Donald Landsman, and it's nice to be back, even if it's somewhat for less than three minutes. I think we're making this matter, or we will be making this matter, more complicated than needed. To put it in perspective, what we're talking about is a posh leaf blower ban for thirty-one days in a month where there are very few leaves on the ground. If you think leaf blowers are a nuisance and wish to see some curbs, you should pass this ordinance. The objections made, or will be made, do not seem convincing. The main objections seem to be that it's unenforceable. The police say they can do a good job of enforcement, but if that's the problem, we should get better enforcement procedures, not kill the ordinance. We have lots of laws that are difficult to enforce: speeding, using cell phones while driving, and many more. The answer is not to repeal the laws. That the ban is for too short a time. I think it is for too short a time, but that's not a reason to vote no. If the ordinance proves helpful, the next time around, we can increase the time. A little relief from noise now is better than no relief. And if we kill it now, there probably won't be a next time. That it improperly limits one's liberty. One should have as much liberty as possible, but one should not be at liberty to ruin your day or mine. Another one is that the machines make, that other machines make the same amount of noise, so why pick on leaf blowers? Yes, other machines make lots of noise, and perhaps some unnecessary ones should be banned. But this ordinance is about leaf blowers, and if you think it's hard to get this one passed, try adding other machines to it. The next objection seems to be that we cannot evaluate it. I can tell you that if my neighbor stops using his leaf blower for a month, I will be able to evaluate it. And you will be when your neighbor stops. That the ordinance is discriminatory. Well, it is, and I'm not sure why all of the exceptions were made. And as someone said, noise is noise. But do we want to kill the test because this town's cemeteries and some others can continue to use leaf blowers for thirty days? I hope not. As a town, as a country, we have spent lots of time and money to decrease the amount of noise and air pollution we create. We have mufflers, we restrict airplane flights, we control smokestack emissions, and so on. These all have costs, but our communities and our citizens are better for the restrictions.
Thirty seconds.
Here we have an opportunity to abate what almost everyone sees as a deterrent, a detriment to the quiet enjoyment of our homes. Let's do it. Hundreds, hundreds of towns have done it. Very few have overturned the law, indicating that the laws have been... Hundreds of towns have done it, very few have overturned the law, indicating that the laws have been approved and the citizens are happy with them. We are asking for a test. The ordinance starts August 1st. It lasts 31 days. Then its powers are over. Then we'll see if it worked and it helped create a quiet community. Then we can choose to renew it, add to it, or forget about it. But it is certainly worth trying. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Carlson, to be followed by Lucy Krasner.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Listening to Mr. Landsman, who comes from District 11, makes me think of a funny thing that happened about 20 years ago, when there was a great stink in the harbor. One of my colleagues called up complaining about the stink to somebody in the Sewer Department. And they said to this colleague that if it stinks where you are, where do you think it is down here? That Mr. Landsman comes from an area of town where a house sits on four acres. I come from an area of town where a house usually sits on two tenths of one acre. You have cluster housing where I come from. If you've got noise problem up on Barrenut Hollow Road, bore, you've got noise problems in District 1. And these leaf blowers really contribute to it in the spring, summer, and autumn. We need a little bit of relief from it. We need to do a little bit of experimentation to see whether a ban like this can help out matters. Now, in my own case, my own case is very special. I do suffer from asthma. I was reminded by my body in late afternoon of this case, and that this is a time of the year that's a little delicate for me. With some restriction during the most sultry parts of the summer from leaf blower pollution, I think would help all people who have some kind of respiratory problems around District 1, the southern part of District 7, District 2. I recommend that we try this and that you vote for this ban for just one month of leaf blowers.
Lucy Krasner, to be followed by Peter Malkin.
Mr. Moderator and other members of the RTM. I think that one month of a ban is pointless, frankly. A neighbor of mine seems to always mow his grass Sunday evening as I'm having dinner on my terrace. The noise is so awful that it's very unpleasant. In fact, I find it noisier than leaf blowers. Now, I'm not exactly sure how this enforcement for this leaf blower ban works, because I'm not sure how I could call the police and say, "This man's noise of his lawnmower, in my mind, is so noisy, it may exceed noise regulations." I'm not sure I'm supposed to do that. I'm not sure how one handles that. I'll be brief. I think that one month of banning these is not worthwhile.
Peter Malkin, to be followed by Christine Edwards. And I do have the result of the vote on item six, which was the acceptance of the gift relating to the point. Those in favor, 178; opposed, zero; abstaining, one. That item is carried. I also have the result of the vote on the District Eight motion to amend this item seven, to take out the exclusion for entities. Those in favor, 60; opposed, 116; abstaining, one. So that motion to amend has failed. Mr. Malkin.
Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM, thank you very much for allowing me to speak for three minutes. Mr. Von Keiserling, I wish you would let me your jacket. I just would like to say it's taken 20 years to get a proposal for a one-month ban. If you take all the time that's been put into this, all the effort that's been made, and the cooperation of the three members unanimously on the Board of Selectmen recommending, the purpose of this is a test. The test to see whether this will make a difference in our lives, our health, and our environment, and our enjoyment. And I think that it's really, really time to do this, to see if it works, try it out. And by a total ban in the private property areas, you will eliminate all the problems the police have enforcement, where they don't know how many acres are involved, what hours are involved, what days are involved, all of these rules that are very, very complicated that now exist. And I'll just make one last comment, and that is, it's amazing to me that the Board of Health can say that it doesn't see this as a health issue when it itself put into effect the present regulation on noise that is unenforceable, but still apparently recognize it as a health issue. I urge that you vote for this, that we end this 20-year effort. Try it out, see if it works. Thank you very much.
Christine Edwards, to be followed by Chris Von Keiserling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and colleagues and guests. It's really interesting that Mr. Malkin has just brought up the fact that this is 20 years of a saga. A friend of mine said, "Oh, we started that about 20 years ago," and I was dumbfounded. What's happened in the meantime? Well, we have quite a lot of our neighbors who have a leaf blower ban, such as Yonkers, Hastings, Greenberg, Bronxville, Larchmont, Pelham Village, Scarsdale, Amerenac, and lately, the City of Rye. It would be wonderful to see us participate in the kind of leaf blower ban that they have put in place, which actually is from June 1st to September 30th. And I wanted to bring this up because we think this is really brand-new and courageous, and yet 20 years have gone into looking at this as a possibility. It's a high decibel level, and another aspect we look of as a real health hazard, anyone who's seen, many of the people who are doing leaf blowing, they don't even have ear protection on. They may have it in their truck, they may have it right on their belt, but they're not even wearing that. That's a real health hazard as well. But I really want to bring it to the fact that if we're going to do this for a month, fine. I'd like to do it for more than that. But if it's taken 20 years to get one month, let's go forward, try this. And next year, I'd like to see us really put in place something that's going to be June 1st through September 30th. Thank you very much.
All right, that's five speakers down, seven who have signed up to go. Mr. Von Keiserling, to be followed by Frank Pozluzny.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've talked about our wonderful old members in the RTM, passed and gone. One of them was my dear old friend Fred Sibley from District 1. And some of you old timers remember, he'd get up and he used to always have his little props, like a radio and things like that. Well, this is mine. This is a lot of noise. We have 11,000 false alarms in this town. We have 90 or so emergency calls for ambulances, not to mention all the other things that go on in this town besides speeding and cellphone and everything else that people want to have attended to. Quite frankly, I don't think our police have the time, nor I would wish them to have the time, to spend in a vote to this ordinance where it's going if it should be approved. Quite frankly, if somebody I love dearly is hurt, harmed, killed because the responding policeman or somebody is on a noise ordinance call, I think I would sue the heck out of the town, quite frankly. Thank you.
Frank Pozluzny, to be followed by Denise Savageo. And I'd ask our following speakers to please come forward so we don't await the long walk-up.
Thank you very much. I just want to say I'm very much in favor of this one-month ban. A lot of us have the privilege of traveling to other parts of the country in the month of August. And I have had several guests come back to town that used to live here, who've been away for several years for reunions. And one of the absurdities that they've noticed, the change in this town, is the absurd number of large pieces of equipment cutting small pieces of lawn. In my own neighborhood, where my grandmother lived on two tenths of an acre and once a week would take out a hand reel mower and take care of her own lawn, I now actually can wake up on a Saturday or whatever morning and have a pickup truck the size of, you know, like a tandem-wheeled pickup truck with a trailer with a piece of equipment larger than what we used to have taking care of 10-acre estates down on Barmshire Road to cut two tenths of an acre, with three guys on leaf blowers and one guy and a piece of equipment bigger than the whole backyard it's cutting. It's become an absurdity in this town. And when you get away from it and you get to the quiet of other communities that haven't gotten to this place, I don't know how we've gotten to this place, but that's where we are now. And we've lost the quality of life because we've gotten to this absurdity. And I think one month reprieve from it may make us all appreciate the quietness. And I think it just makes good sense. We need it. Thank you.
Denise Savageo, to be followed by Doug Wells.
On June 7th, the Conservation Commission took up this issue and looked at what was on the RTM call. They voted to have me present this to you. This was reviewed by Bill Rutherford, our chairman. And for your information, he is a landscape architect and very familiar with landscaping and the techniques they need to use. At the June 7th, 2012 meeting, the Conservation Commission meeting, the commission voted in favor of item number seven prohibiting the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers in the town of Greenwich during the month of August as presented on the call. This trial ban of leaf blowers is a welcome first step in addressing an issue in town that impacts not only the quality of life in Greenwich, but also the environment. Summer is a good time for such a trial, as it is after-spring cleanup and before leaves begin to fall in October. Leaf blowers are tools that have been widely adopted by landscapers, contractors, and other land operations managers. Their use has been expanded beyond leaves and now includes such things as lawn clippings and sand on driveways, to name a few. As a tool, they are often misused and/or overused, resulting in air pollution from emissions, airborne particulates, soil erosion, water quality impairment, increased stormwater runoff, and noise pollution. This is especially prevalent in summer months when there is not a large accumulation of leaves or debris that warrant the use of this tool. The use of leaf blowers has resulted in a manicured lawnscape along our roadways on both public and private properties that has serious consequences. This constant removal of organic debris strips away topsoil, resulting in compacted soil conditions that increases runoff and reduces infiltration. The result is increased flooding and lowering of groundwater tables. Additionally, the removal of grass clippings eliminates the organic matter that would naturally fertilize and compost a lawn, thus requiring the addition of chemical fertilizers and more irrigation. All of this is in direct conflict with low-end impact development principles and our goals as a town to address our water quality and quantity concerns. As a community, we need to adopt best management practices that result in a healthy and sustainable landscape in which we all live. The leaf blower trial ban would work towards that goal. The commission supports the adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
Doug Wells, to be followed by Molly Rothman.
Couple of things that the previous speaker said that I think are important. The communities that were cited from Westchester County that have passed this ordinance, as well as Cambridge, all have one thing in common: they're high-density communities. A significant portion of the town of Greenwich is not high-density, anything above the merit. Why are we passing a ban that will affect those larger homeowners up there? Tell them they can't deal with their lawns that might be two or three acres or more in size by not being able to use these leaf blowers. So I don't think we're the same community as those communities. And I don't think that's a fair resolution. The second thing that I would point out is that the previous speaker indicated that this has been 20 years in the making. And I went to the Greenwich Comm website to see about their organization. And they acknowledge that they are the successor to Project Quiet Yards that brought this to us in the mid-'90s when we had the Board of Health pass some changes to leaf blowers. That organization has a total of 76 members. Greenwichcomm.org, it's on their website. Thirteen of them are not from Greenwich. That means there are 63 members of this organization saying this is a town-wide problem. That's about 1/10 of 1% of the community. So I'm just asking that... My concern here is that this is a few very influential people that are seeking this change in our ordinance. So I would ask each of you to vote whether or not you think this is a real problem. Finally, one of the speakers said that, you know, we have ordinances that prevent people from speeding and using cell phones. Those ordinances are designed to protect us because they endanger all of us. If somebody's speeding or using their cellphone or they're driving, they're endangering us. Philosophically, I don't think we should have an ordinance that fines people and tells them what they're going to do on their property when it doesn't endanger anybody else. Thank you.
Molly Rothman, to be followed by Gretchen Biggs.
Good evening. I'm Molly Rothman. I'm actually from the city of Yonkers. I serve on the Yonkers Green Policy Task Force. We are an advisory committee to the City Council. I'm here to lend support to your proposed leaf blower ordinance. This is the sixth summer that Yonkers has had what we consider to be a public health ordinance. It is not a noise ordinance in Yonkers. Our law prohibits the use of gas-powered leaf blowers from June 1st to September 30th of each year. I will just rattle off a short list of the medical support that we have for this blower ordinance in the city of Yonkers: the American Lung Association of New York State, the American Academy of Pediatrics, Dr. Alan Dozer, Chief of Pediatric Pulmonology at Maria Ferrari Children's Hospital at New York Medical College, Dr. Philip Landergan, Chairman of Department of Community and Preventive Medicine at Mount Sinai, the physicians of the Pediatric Environmental Health Science Unit, the President and CEO of St. Joseph's Hospital in Yonkers, the Director of the Asthma Program for St. John's Riverside Hospital in Yonkers. That's just a short list of the medical support that we have for this ordinance in the city of Yonkers. Those people not only wrote letters, but they provided testimony at our City Council meetings. As you are proposing, our ordinance was originally passed for a trial summer in 2007. Then, based on the success of that trial, the City Council voted unanimously to enact the law permanently, which is unusual in the city of Yonkers if you follow their politics. They did so with great confidence because none of the dire predictions or, you know, concerns that are being raised at this meeting, many of them were raised at our meetings, ever came to fruition. As far as tidiness, there's no discernible difference in Yonkers. There were no complaints from homeowners or customers, none. Why? Because leaf blowers aren't necessary to tidiness in the summer of your property. They simply aren't. We had no complaints. As far as enforcement goes, enforcement was very straightforward. You send out a notification in the spring, alerting people that the ban is coming into effect. Our ordinance actually generates revenue. It's a $250 appearance ticket, and we've made, you know, $25,000 one summer. And that was only partial enforcement of the ban, because most of our tickets are warnings, actually. Customer rates have never been raised. Customer rates have never been raised in Westchester County. The law's in effect in 16 Westchester County municipalities right now. We were the 10th municipality to pass it. The previous nine passed it as noise ordinances. We were the first one to pass it as a public health ordinance. And then, following our passage, six more municipalities came on board. I strongly urge you to move forward with this. It's a huge benefit to your community. It really restores the tranquility and health, and air quality affects us all. Good luck.
Gretchen Biggs, to be followed by Jim Buttel.
Good evening again. I'm just going to speak. I don't have anything prepared, and most of the speakers tonight have made the points that I would have made. But I'm just going to tell you on a personal level, where I live, the cumulative effect of the leaf blowers makes it so that I really can't spend any time in my yard, which I love gardening. I would be outside in my yard a lot. I have three children. I don't want my children outside and on the street because there are so many leaf blowers in the denser parts of Greenwich going on any given day that it's a real detriment to the quality of life here. As for the larger properties that Mr. Wells mentioned, should... As for the larger properties that Mr. Wells mentioned should be treated differently, in the leaf season, leaf blowers are used on those large properties for leaf collection and perhaps they assist that process. That's debatable. There have been tests where someone collected leaves with a rake and someone else collected with a leaf blower and the rake was every bit as good. But we're talking about a summer ban and our group had asked for an all-summer ban like other communities all have. No one has a ban out of the hundreds of towns that have bans, none of them are as short as one month. The shortest of all of them are two or three months at least and they're the summer months for many reasons. The air quality is a lot worse in the summer. Fairfield County ranks in the top 25 most polluted counties in the country for ozone pollution. Ozone pollution is caused in large part by the literally hundreds of leaf blowers going every day in Greenwich. We have the highest concentration of leaf blowers per capita of any town or city in the United States. So to ban them in the summer, whether the properties are large or small, makes no difference because they're not, on the large properties, the leaf blowers aren't being used to tend the lawns of the large properties. They're being used on hardscapes mostly. So I really don't have a lot to say. I just, I would ask you for reasons of health and quality of life to please pass this ordinance that the citizens have been asking for for so many years now. And it can be worded better, it can be cleaned up, it can be tightened if indeed the RTM wants to take it up again in the future, but as worded and as it is, it's a start, so please pass it.
Jim Buttel.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, only a month, I can support that. Problem is, it's not only a month. If you read the letter that Denise Savage wrote on behalf of the Conservation Commission, it's a welcome first step. If you read the fourth paragraph, "The use of leaf blowers has resulted in manicured landscape along our roadways on both public and private properties," as if that is a bad thing! As a homeowner, I'm dying to have a green lawn. I'm fighting grubs right now. Anybody knows how to fix those? And let me tell you, I don't have a gas-powered leaf blower. I have an electric blower vac, mulches, I put the mulch back down. But this is the first step and if you don't think it is, I would urge you to read Alma Rutgers' op-ed piece in the Greenwich Times from last week where there are those amongst the supporters, not all of the supporters, you know, I credit Mr. Malcolm with all he's done to make Greenwich green. But all I'd say to our Conservation Commission, don't demean me for wanting to have a green front yard.
All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number seven and proceed to poll your delegation. We are now voting on the merits of the proposed leaf blower ordinance. We do have three more items on our agenda. Item eight now comes before us. Mr. Von Keiseling. Mr. Von Keiseling, please. Yes, it is. Oh, Lucy Krasner?
Right. The reason I'm bringing this item before you, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM, is because Mr. Von Keiseling, our chairman, was amongst the nominees for the condemnation commission. So this is a commission that the Appointments Committee appoints and brings before you. Resolved that the following named persons nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed members of the condemnation commission for the term expiring 12/31/13. And the members would be Donald R. Conway, Jackie Hammack, Paul C. Settlemeyer, David Sims, and Christopher Von Keiseling.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee does not require a second and is currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening once again. The Land Use Committee met on May 31. We had Jackie Hammack, Paul Settlemeyer, David Sims, and Chris Von Keiseling with us. Donald Conway wasn't with us because he was filming the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing that was going on below us. This slate is a complete replacement of the previous committee. The candidates introduced themselves and presented their qualifications and their reasons for volunteering for this committee. Discussion revolved around the principal task of the condemnation committee, that being the allocation of benefits and costs for public works condemnations, specifically sewers or street improvements. There are no condemnation projects currently pending, none within sight. The committee voted for the nominees as a slate. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Okay. And the Appointments Committee report on this? Lucy Krasner, are you giving that?
The Appointments Committee, yes. I thought you said the Finance.
Well, we're taking committee reports. Does the Appointments Committee want to make any report on this?
Yes. It is indeed an entirely new group of people for this and the reason for that is that the previous members, for one reason or another, did not choose to be part and run again and be interviewed again for this commission. So in order to find new members of this commission, we advertised the Public Service Announcement in the paper. I made an announcement at an earlier RTM meeting in hopes of finding new qualified members. We think we have found a very good slate and we present it to you. The vote from the Appointments Committee to present this group as a slate was 11-0-1. District 1 abstained.
Thank you. Discussion on item eight. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number eight and proceed to poll your delegation. Item number nine now comes before us. Mr. Von Keiseling, Chair of the Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Oh, this is the, I'm not used to putting these before you as usually the selectmen do. Nine, resolve that the following named persons nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed regular and alternate members of the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring 12/31/2013. As regulars, David W. Detchin, Joan M. Caldwell, Robert M. Burns, Michael Wasick, Jill K. Oberlander. As alternates, Michael Warner and Steve Rubin. We voted for this. Oh, you want the report?
No, not yet. So that is a resolution offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee and it does not require a second and is currently before us. Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of the Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. We went through a considerable effort on the Labor Contracts. We nominated these candidates after considerable advertising. All are incumbents except for Mr. Rubin, who replaces Mr. Josh Brown. Mr. Rubin brings many of the skills and manner which Mr. Brown supplied. We met on March 27th and voted 12-0-0 in favor of him. I would like to make a further comment. I understand that there has been deep discussions about the quality of the Labor Contract Committee's work product to date and efforts to have it improved. While not discussed directly in the Appointments Committee, it has been a common concern. One had hoped that with a wider candidate pool, some remedy might have been achieved. The Labor Contracts Committee nominees were picked after interviewing all candidates and after extensively advertising for the spot. We had eight candidates for the seven spots. After this extensive efforts to get a larger pool with new faces, we even delayed our interviews to an unusually late date, hence the June call, hoping more candidates. By May, we had to move with what we had. After interviews, the Appointments Committee voted on a group of candidates, selecting the five highest over a majority amount for the five-member nominations. Then we voted on the three remaining candidates. The two highest over majority were chosen as alternate nominations. Our problem with Labor Contracts Committee nominations... Are we ready? No?
All right, excuse me. Mr. Von Keiseling has a very good point. I know it is a late hour. We have additional business to conduct and I ask our members to please give courtesy to our speakers. If you want to have a conversation, please leave the auditorium and do that. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Our problem, as I was saying, in nominations is that they must come from a fixed pool of only RTM members. There are many RTM members who have expertise and talent for Labor Contracts Committee, but if, for their own reasons, they choose not to place themselves as candidates, little else can be done. We cannot compel candidacy. One might guess the reasons for lack of candidates. However, you may know that substantial efforts were made to address the problem. People suggested charter changes, expanding the Labor Contracts Committee to seven members and three alternates, for example, which might have given broader thinking and more ability to prepare in-depth reporting. This failed also in an attempt to have that come about. As to the slate issue, which people have raised an issue about, the Appointments Committee bundled the nominations for simplicity, understanding that if there were a problem with one or more of the nominees, they could be separated out of the call item. There has been a history of varied opinions on slate nominations. This year, we proposed a slate. Last year, we proposed a slate and it was brought forward in the call as individuals. That's in 2010. In 2008, it was on the call as a slate. Generally speaking, over history, it's come as a slate. There may be a question of whether that's appropriate or not and we'd be happy to respond to that in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis with the report of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee report was widely distributed to district chairs, the Finance Committee members, and committee chairmen, so I assume that all of you are familiar with it. I can summarize briefly that this was a very surprising vote in the Finance Committee. There was six in favor of the slate, four opposed, and one abstained. Two of the six are members of the slate, so they, in effect, voted for themselves or the balance of the Labor Contracts Committee. And the one abstention we had from District 12 abstained because the delegate did not want to vote against some of the people on that slate that he admires greatly. The districts voting against the slate were 7, 9, 8, and 11. The no votes were basically described as falling into three general areas. First, some people on this committee have been there for so long that they are susceptible to a group-think approach to labor contracts. Second, there's an over-concentration of members in District 10. And as a result, other districts do not get the representation at their district meetings that could be achieved where there are wider representation on the Labor Contracts Committee. And finally, is the poor quality of reporting. The Finance Committee has made note of this and has met on two occasions with members of the Labor Contracts Committee in an effort to bring about a more appropriate level of communication to the RTM so that members would know exactly what's involved in these contracts and be able to evaluate them for themselves. We had a vote tonight. You saw what it was and you saw the information that you got. You have to make a decision about whether or not you feel that that's appropriate. And if you need further detail, you can see my report. It's also posted online. Thank you.
Betsy Fruman, Chair of District 9.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, District 9 was very busy last Thursday and we make a motion to refer this item back to the Appointments Committee in order to present the nominees as individuals to vote on as opposed to a single slate. District 9 is dissatisfied with the current process of Labor Contracts Committee reporting. And, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to speak to that when it's appropriate.
All right. This is a motion to refer item 9 back to the Appointments Committee offered on behalf of District 9, correct?
Yes.
Is there any other?
Oh, our vote. Our vote was 13-0-0.
All right. Was there a reporting back date as part of that motion? So just simply refer it back to the Appointments Committee. Okay? All right. So that is currently before us. We will have discussion on that. There was some mention of procedural means of dealing with a resolution that has multiple parts and so I want to make sure all of our committee and district chairs are aware of what is called division of a question under Roberts Rules, and I'll just read the first paragraph. "When a motion relating to a single subject," motion, resolution being the same thing, "contains several parts, each of which is capable of standing as a complete proposition if the others are removed, the parts can be separated to be considered and voted on as if they were distinct questions by adoption of the motion to divide the question." So there are ways to take a slate such as this and act on the individuals. Given the late hour and given what I understand to be a shortage of voting cards, I'm not proposing we do that tonight. But going forward, I want our district and committee chairs to be aware of what procedural devices are available to them. So we now have before us a motion to refer item 9 to the Appointments Committee. Discussion on that motion to refer.
Can I? Can I, Ms. Speaker?
Yes. Betsy Fruman.
Okay. I realized after we had voted on this that it, we were, the motion as presented to you and as voted on doesn't fully explain what District 9 wanted. District 9 did not want to divide the motion into individuals. We wanted the Appointments Committee to relook at this whole Labor Contracts Committee. And this is what we're having problems with. We have discussed on several occasions that we, as a district, do not feel fully informed on those contracts negotiated by the town. We do feel fully informed on those contracts negotiated by the Board of Education. And I think, from my way of looking at it, that's why Labor Contracts was created, to help us understand what's going on with the town-negotiated contracts. We, as a district, want to fully understand. We want to have complete discussions. Now, the problem is that we're not able to clone Al Kava and have him come to all of our districts. So the solution was supposed to be labor contracts. And we, as a district, feel that we need this information in a written form before the committee and district meetings so we can read it at home, underline it, digest it, and when we go to the committee meetings and when we go to our district meeting, we will be able to discuss it intelligently. It would be most helpful if the members of Labor Contracts could come out to the districts. There are seven of them. There are 12 districts. It could happen. It would be difficult, but it could happen. So basically, what our motion to refer back is to send a message to Labor Contracts that we are not getting the information that we need in a timely manner and that if the people who are currently on the committee do not want to or cannot do what I feel we, as a district, need, then we need different... as a district, need, then we need different people on Labor Contracts. Thank you.
Further discussion on the District 9 motion to refer Item 9. Dr. Carlson.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I am the District 1 member to the Appointments Committee. I think Appointments Committee did a pretty good job in making this election that's before you. In terms of selection, you have one of the most distinguished persons in the history of the RTM, Ms. Joan Caldwell, on there, who has been an essential person in Labor Contracts, I believe, since its inception. It's a good choice that we have. I do not think that reconsideration is necessary. I think that Labor Contracts do much better for the town than the Board of Education. I would say that I would personally prefer Labor Contracts to a little bit be more conservative in its views, but it does do, for what it does, a quite good job. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Joan Caldwell, District 10. I'm sorry. Before you begin, I want to announce the votes that we have. I have the result of the vote on Item 7, which is the Leet Blower Ordinance. Those in favor, 76; opposed, 93; abstaining, 4. That item has failed. I also have the result of the vote on Item 8, which is the Condemnation Commission Appointments. Those in favor, 148; opposed, 6; abstaining, 7. That item has carried. Joan Caldwell.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. I have had the privilege and the responsibility of serving on the Labor Contracts Committee since it was started, and that goes back to about 1973. So I have a long history, and many of those years, I served as its chairman. I know how that committee works, and it works well. Now, I understand the complaint or the concerns of the chairman of District 9. Labor Contracts is not an easy subject to understand, and when people start throwing pages of numbers at you, you get a little glassy-eyed. Unfortunately, what the town meeting has wanted over the past 10 years is more and more and more information. Not that they shouldn't have it, but they've wanted it. And as we've attempted to meet that demand, to provide more and more, I'm not sure that the members are boiling it down to the bottom line, and the bottom line is, what did the union want? What were we willing to give? And how could we get to middle ground without going through mediation, arbitration, and binding arbitration? Mr. Kava has done an outstanding job for the town for the past 10 years that he's been here. I personally think he's one of the best negotiators, if not the best negotiator this town has had. The Board of Education may provide you with more detail and more factual information, but the end results for the town are not nearly as conservative as what Mr. Kava has done. Now, as to the Labor Contracts Committee, you have seven people, and they work well together, very well together. There are five members and two alternates, but we make no distinction between the alternates and the members. We draw them all in, and everyone has a say. And our present chairman does what I used to do, which is try to have a consensus. That's not easy because we are seven very opinionated people, and we have not yet killed each other. We're very civil. But we are opinionated, and we come to the subject with divergent views and certainly different fiscal attitudes. I am fiscally conservative. I have a little trouble every now and then with some of the numbers that we have to put before you, and I have stood before you many times and said, "You really have to hold your nose to accept this one, but it's better than we think we'd get if we went another route." Now, you have a new chairman. I am not chairman this term. I don't intend to be chairman next time if I'm on the committee, and there's a big if there. The new chairman has worked very hard to make the process of negotiation and arbitration, which is a key factor, visible and understandable. He stood at this microphone and spoke for a long time, giving it to you in chapter and verse. Mr. Brown, who is vice chairman of the Labor Contracts Committee, spoke to you as well. I don't know what you heard, but it was obvious from the questions that came to us afterwards that there were people who simply didn't understand. We will try again because it's a tough subject, and you've got to understand it. Does a written report help? Yes, it'll give you numbers. But will we go into the details of what went on in the bargaining room? No, because we've been advised by council not to. In fact, I was told to make the reports as short and as sweet as possible. What we file with the town clerk is essentially the votes and not much else because we were advised to. The thinking of an overview committee like Labor Contracts Committee can be one heck of a weapon against a town in arbitration and in grievance, and we're not going to open up the town to that. Will we come to the districts? I think we could. And to the chairman of District 9 and a couple of other chairmans, I've been there. Not recently, but I went. It's a little harder for me now because I'm district chair in 10, but I'm willing to make the try. In short, what I'm saying to you is, you've got the best you probably can get, and I urge that you not throw the baby out with the bathwater. As far as I personally am concerned, this doesn't feel like an attempt to get more information. It doesn't feel like an attempt to improve things at all. It feels like a vote of confidence, and I don't feel the confidence there coming from the speaker. So my feeling is, if I'm doing a job that people don't want me to do, I'm a fool, and I will not continue. And I think many members of the committee share my views. So consider wisely which way you want to go.
Lucy Krasner.
Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM, I've been a member of the RTM for 34 years, and I have, I'm astonished at what we heard from the chairman of District 9 by not understanding or believing that we are getting enough information on these contracts. Joan Caldwell, for many years, was the chair of the Labor Contracts, and the detail and clarity of her reports, I thought, was astonishing. She took us through the changes in health benefits, the changes in accumulated sick leave, that they were trying to make changes that were beneficial to the town. To me, it seemed very clear, very detailed, and you could really wrap your hands around the issues that they were wrestling with. So I think that they do an outstanding job. Mr. Detchin, who has been chairman, his report have been lengthy, to say the least. Some of us, I thought, around our area were saying a little too lengthy, but I think they were extremely detailed. So I'm really wondering what the district in District 9 is concerned with the fact that they're not getting enough information. The other thing I would say is that there was some comments that more districts should be represented. That District 10 seems to be overly weighted on the Labor Contracts Committee. These are not issues that relate to one district or another, so I am not concerned that one district might have more members than another and another not have any members. These are town-wide labor issues. So the fact of district representation, again, is one that does not concern me, and I think we have an excellent group of the Labor Contracts Committee. I think we should vote them as a slate. I think they give us an enormous amount of detail, the step increases, the percent, the comparison to, well, let us remember what we are hearing, the comparison with other towns, inflation, an enormous amount of material for us to make our decisions. I would urge you to vote this group in as a slate.
Lucia Jansen. Mr. Von Keisling, are you waiting to speak?
Whenever.
All right. Lucia Jansen, to be followed by Mr. Von Keisling.
Good evening, Lucia Jansen. I wasn't planning on speaking in regards to this issue, but I really take exception to the fact that information that was requested by RTM members was provided. I personally, as many of you in this room know, created a new format for the Labor Contracts Committee to present that included the fringe benefits of the impact of these labor contracts because we only get one slice of the information. And I had showed with the last GEA contract how much information was absent from the presentation of the labor contracts. I didn't have, for this contract, I didn't do the same, but just so you know the kind of information that is necessary, I believe, for this body to make decisions because currently there is this thought process that labor contracts are exempt or separate from the town budget. I disagree with that, and many others do too. For example, are you aware that in the employing, in this last contract with the Teamsters, 76% of the employees remain in the defined benefit retirement plan? 76%. We didn't even know how many employees were covered under this contract, nor did we know how many were in defined contribution versus defined benefit, which there's a very big cost difference. Are you aware that?
All right. I'm now going to ask you to address the motion to refer.
Okay.
Our discussion cannot go into the merits unless absolutely needed, and you're now, I think, addressing a different issue.
Okay. Well, the point is that this information that was requested was ignored by the Labor Contracts Committee. They felt it had to do with town budget information versus labor, and if we look at the impact of labor to the budget, particularly if you look at this particular contract with the Teamsters, with Nathaniel Witherall, the Griff Golf Course, you hear those leaders. They are working as hard as they can with the constraints of these labor agreements. To say that it's apart from the town budget process is just not doing the Labor Contracts Committee process justice here. And I think that there is a difference with data versus information. I think we get a lot of data and not enough information.
I interpret what you're saying to go to the merits, whether these people should be approved or not. I am only interested in hearing why we should refer this back to the Appointments Committee now.
So I support that it go back to the Appointments Committee in order for a more greater recognition of people to come forward for the Labor Contracts Committee, and I would like to say tonight that I would like to put my name out there for consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Von Keisling, to be followed by Jenny Crowe.
I defer to Ms. Crowe first. I just.
Mr. Von Keisling, now or never?
Fine. All I wanted to say, speaking as chairman of Appointments Committee, I don't know what the other members have to say, and I don't know what your decision's going to be tonight, but I want you to know that the Appointments Committee stands at your pleasure. What you wish us to do, we will be happy to do over the summer, which we really enjoy. But I would ask you, if you're going to refer this back to Appointments Committee and have the same group of candidates before us and no change, it becomes a much rather futile effort. If there are people who agree with what's been said and they think there's time for a change, then they have to put their action where their opinions are and put themselves forward as candidates. We, as Appointments Committee members, cannot create candidates that don't exist. They must come from the RTM. They have to be you. This is a time when you have to stand up and be counted if you really feel this way. Otherwise, we just spin our wheels. But whatever you like, we're happy to do. Thank you.
Jenny Crowe, to be followed by Jim Buttel.
I'll be very brief. District 8, like District 9, voted to refer, and we'll say ditto to Betsy Fruman's comments. Thank you.
Mr. But, a vote on that? 13-7-1, District 8. Mr. Buttel, to be followed by Christine Edwards.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I serve five terms on the Labor Contracts Committee, and I think there's a little disconnect, and I would say to the folks from District 9, if you don't feel you're getting the information being underrepresented, get somebody out of your district and nominate them. Send them forward if you're concerned about one district being overrepresented. As I think back to the days of David Detchin and Joan Caldwell, Josh Brown and I were on that committee. We both had started in the RTM in 10 and moved into 8. So it's, you're right. My concern, and this is a concern about the Labor Contracts Committee, and it's one of the reasons that I left. You heard Ms. Caldwell say that both she and the current chairman try to build consensus. I think it's the 5-0-0 votes we constantly get on labor contracts that, when I wanted to vote against a contract, and I did.
Why should we refer this now?
Because, Mr. Moderator, the slate we currently have will continue to bring us 5-0-0 votes on labor contracts. When Mr. Wasick joined the committee, it was my hope that he would take up my charge of not automatically supporting the group-think mentality in the Labor Contracts Committee. I would also say there is information that we don't get. We could very easily, the redline version of the contract that we all go through, some 70 to 100 pages of contract language, could easily be put up on the RTM website at the time that we, as Labor Contract Committee members, get it, so anybody who's interested in the details of a contract can read the actual contract. We don't get that as part of our explanatory material that you get in your packet, nor should we have the expense of mailing that out to every member. Most of you would circular file it. But it is the question of consensus and the pressure for consensus, and I think there's a disconnect between the rate of growth and spending of the town and the 5-0-0 votes we constantly get out of that committee. And so, yes, I, for one, would like to see some change on that committee, and I would like to see others step forward. Thank you.
Christine Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and colleagues and guests. I was very happy to have Betsy Fruman come forward because this was such a long discussion we had at District 8, and one of our colleagues actually went into the town clerk's office, and these 11 pages were all that was there. That was one of the issues that Betsy brought up. It's wonderful to have a discussion on the night of an RTM meeting, but really, the call was to try and have preparation done beforehand because when we have meetings, particularly at this length, it's very hard to just get every single point succinct and clear. To only have 11 pages to refer to at the clerk's office, to me, is really a reason to take a look at this for separating out and really maybe the Appointments Committee looking at other people who can come in. We have new things going on in labor today that may not have been there 30 years ago, new ways of thinking of how we can do benefits, et cetera. And maybe this is a time when other people who are in the RTM, who have expertise in these contractual and health and other areas of expertise, do come forward, and I encourage people to do so. Thank you very much.
Irv Porter, District 6, speaking on the motion to refer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At the Finance Committee meeting, as you heard from the chairman previously, the vote was 6-4, one abstention, and we had one district that was absent. That vote could just as easily have been 5-5. It just as easily had been 5-5. And the manifestation of that, in my judgment, is that what none of us really want to hear And the manifestation of that, in my judgment, is that what none of us really want to hear are the results that we've been getting on a regular basis without fighting back. And if I misquote Mr. Detchin, please correct me. But he offered the suggestion that there could be a forum, an open session, where all of you could come if you had ideas as to what needed to be done in order to make it easier for you to understand, number one. But it's not necessarily going to change the answers when it comes to the town side of negotiation. It's not. The world that we're in is a tough world right now. And you boil it all the way down and it basically manifests itself into what do we do relative to headcount? It's that simple. And that's not our decision. That's the decision of the Board of Selectmen, that's the decision of the BET. And whether or not there's justification for even thinking that way, I don't know. But what I can tell you is that common sense tells us that we all feel a degree of frustration. And in that context, even though I voted 6-4 on the six side, I would support the motion to refer, to give the opportunity to Mr. Detchin and others to clear the air, to have the First Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen and the BET participate in the process, to make sure that we know what kind of information it is we want, and in doing so, that we're all better equipped to deal with the decision when it comes forward. Thank you.
All right. Well, the district chairs, I'm going to call for a recorded vote. This is the District Nine motion to refer item nine to the Appointments Committee. If you are in favor of referring it back, you should vote yes.
Mr. Moderator, can I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Detchin. David Detchin, District Ten, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
I just want to make a few remarks in response to some of the items that came out here in the course of the discussion. Important thing to keep in mind is that the Labor Contracts Committee does not prepare the Explanos. We do not control the negotiations. We are an advisory body and no more. In fact, what I have done in my first term is to try to expand the amount of information that goes to the various committees and districts extensively. There were three different presentations to the RTM outside of labor contract approvals in the course of the last term. We appointed a liaison to both the BOC and the Finance Committee to be there to explain the discussions that the RTM, that the Labor Contracts Committee had had on a particular vote. We had, in fact, an extraordinary session with the BOC and also with the Finance Committee to discuss these issues. One of the points that was raised the other day was maybe we should have gotten these things in writing, at which point I sent to Ms. Fruman the written text of the two speeches that were, two of the speeches that were made to the RTM by members of the Labor Contracts Committee. And in fact, she distributed those to the members of her district. The fact of the matter is, the Labor Contracts Committee has worked extensively in this last term to increase the amount of information that's going out to the RTM in general and also to key committees of the RTM. As far as the issue about what information should be in the Explanos and what should in fact be the scope of the Explanos, I think that there's a fundamental philosophical difference between some folks on the Finance Committee and some folks on the Labor Contracts Committee. The Labor Contracts Committee sees its task essentially as vetting the specific labor negotiations that are in front of it. In other words, the issues that the town is trying to raise in a particular negotiation and the issues that the labor union is trying to raise, and trying to critique the position of the town as to whether or not it has the right priorities and also whether it has the right cost parameters. And the fact of the matter is, despite the concern about the 5-0-0 votes, we do, from time to time, have influence on the Board of Education negotiating team and on the town negotiator to get him to shift his position from the ones that they were originally planning to take, in large part because we say, "You're going to have difficulty with that particular position if you continue to go with that when you get to the RTM." My real concern about the different formats of the Explanos that the Finance Committee wants and that the Labor Contract Committee believes appropriate is that, in my mind, what the Finance Committee needs to do with its particular form of information that it has, much of which is not relevant to the particular negotiation because it's not being focused on by either side in the negotiations. But what that information is important for is the budgetary process within the town. And it's been my urge to the Finance Committee that it needs to take its format and try to move into the budgetary process as the Finance Committee to work to address issues with the First Selectmen, with the town negotiator, with the Board of Education...
Thirty seconds.
...and the BET on those particular budgetary issues. Because frankly, if you raise the budgetary issues at a time of negotiation of a particular contract, it's probably too late.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I know it's late, I won't be long. I just want to remind the body of a couple of things. First, the mission, according to the RTM rules of the Labor Contracts Committee, is to advise and explain the contracts to the body. That's a method of information. What the chairman of District Nine mentioned is, and the Finance Committee agrees with this, we do not get enough information on the contract to be able to understand all of the costs involved, the underlying costs. We basically get two numbers, the gross wage increase and the benefit increase, or the all other increase, and the total. That's what we're left with. We need more to be able to evaluate it. During the pages that Christine showed you, they were reports in the town clerk's office from 2002 to April of 2012. There's 11 pages there. So we maintain that we're just not getting the information we deserve and need. And we have to find a way to break out of that. Thank you.
All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? District Nine motion to refer item nine. And proceed to poll your delegation quickly. We will need to await the result of this vote. Now, if you are in favor of sending item nine to the Appointments Committee, you should vote yes. If you want to take this up tonight and vote on the merits, you should vote no. All right, we have the result of the vote on the District Nine motion to refer item nine to the Appointments Committee. Those in favor, 87 opposed, 57 abstaining, two. That item is carried. So we have now disposed of item nine. The last of the items on our agenda now comes before us, that is item number 12. May we have the resolution on that? David Tice, our selectman.
Thank you once again, Mr. Moderator. Be it resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agencies for a term expiring 3/31/16, Brian Harris.
Well, remember, please move the adoption of the resolution. Resolution on item 12 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Berg with the report of our Land Use Committee.
So the Land Use Committee interviewed Brian Harris at its meeting on May 31. Mr. Harris is being nominated as a regular member of Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency. He's currently an alternate. He is an architect for Perkins &amp; Will. He discussed his interest in wetlands conservation. He noted that he found service to the Inland Wetlands Agency both interesting and rewarding. He also noted that budget reductions for expert witnesses has put additional burden on the agency to provide backup to defend its decisions. He'd like to encourage more inland wetlands education outreach to the community. Our vote on Mr. Harris was 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Von Keisling, with the Appointments Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Mr. Harris, as a reappointment was mentioned, he's going from an alternate to a regular. Tonight, we filled his positions as alternate, so he's out of a job right now. The question is, do you put him back in the job as a regular? My committee met tonight. We tried to meet with Mr. Harris twice, last Tuesday and tonight, and both times, Mr. Harris was not able to appear. The rule in my committee has always been no show, no go, so to speak. And my committee voted 6-2-0 to postpone him to the next meeting, whether it's a special meeting or the September meeting. Districts Two and Eight voted no. The reason that we voted no is a peculiar situation. If Mr. Harris is postponed, he is not, he is not on the inland wetlands. Our rules are an officer serves until he's replaced. He was an alternate. He has been replaced. So his term is over, he's been replaced, he's out as alternate. Normally, we would, as we appoint a member, a regular member, we would appoint an alternate and kind of an instantaneous turnover. In this case, we're caught between. I got a call from the Director of Inland Wetlands asking me to do whatever's possible to get him through the process. If we're going to appoint him, appoint him tonight because they have a heavy schedule during the summer and they need him and his expertise. So that's why the no votes. I will speak on my own for this as chairman. It was 6-2-0 to postpone.
All right. So you are now making that motion on behalf of your committee.
Could I speak to it?
Well, let's make it first.
Yeah.
All right. It has been moved by the Appointments Committee to postpone item 12 to our September meeting. Discussion on that motion, Mr....
I have a question. Can I speak on that?
Mr. Toddhill.
For a minute, rule.
Do you have a motion for us? No? All right. Dr. Carlson.
I move the previous question second.
All right. It has been moved and seconded to cut off debate. The motion for the previous question is a motion to cut off debate. It is not itself debatable and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. If you are interested in hearing Mr. Von Keisling speak on this, you should vote no. If you want to immediately proceed to vote on the motion to postpone this, you should vote yes. All those in favor of the Appointments Committee motion to postpone item 12 to our September meeting, I'm sorry, no, 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 no. All those in favor of cutting off debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion is carried. Well, all right. So, Mr., let's see. Now we will proceed to the motion to postpone. I am calling for a voice vote, this being a procedural matter. If you are in favor of putting this off until September, you vote yes. If you want to take it up tonight, you vote no. All those in favor of the Appointments Committee motion to postpone item 12 to our September meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh-oh.
Where's that ballot card?
All right. Can we, let's try a standing vote. All those, please, let's everyone take our place. I doubt we have any non-members still here, but only members may stand when voting here. All those in favor of postponing, please rise. Thank you. Opposed, please rise. Okay, the ayes have it. The motion to postpone has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting and absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.